...joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Can we have a roll call for council, please?
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here.
Roll call for redevelopment agency. Agency members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Manukian.
Here.
Can we hear your report, please?
The agenda for the December 6, 2011 joint public meeting of the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency was postponed Thursday, December 1, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you today is a joint public meeting, and it, number one, is Director of Community Development regarding professional services agreement change orders in connection with various projects. One A is agency resolution appropriating $25,000 from the San Fernando Road fund balance to Disney G C three Phase Two project. B is council motion approving a change order for Overland Pacific and Cutler, Inc. in the amount of $75,000 for various real estate services. And one C is agency motion approving a change order for School of Self-Reliance Glendale Farmers Market in an amount of $20,000.
Can we have a report on this item?
If you'd like one.
Brief.
I do have a question regarding item one A. I don't have an issue with item B and C. But item one A, I understand you're hiring for $25,000 someone to do plan check. Is that correct?
I believe it's backfill so that we can dedicate somebody to plan check and still cover the counter hours, so that we can provide the service to the development that we had committed to.
So we're charging redevelopment agency for the plan check from the general fund? Is that what we're doing?
No, the redevelopment agency is funding that overtime, I believe it is, so that, and paying the general fund, so that fire can cover both areas.
So that's what I said, you're basically paying from redevelopment to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I have cards. Why don't we hear from the public, and then if the council has questions, I'll come back to Mr. Lantefain. I have two cards, Lorain Mohill to be followed by Mike Mohill. Lorain Mohill?
Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman and council members. My name is Lorain Mohill. I've been a resident of Glendale for a little over forty years. I love Montrose and enjoy spending time there. I am here to-
Madam Mayor, I believe it may be actually the next item, Ms. Mohill, that you're just be speaking on.
You had written item one, and this is item one, but what item did you want to speak on?
About the signage?
That is a special meeting.
That's not this meeting.
Okay, it's not this meeting?
No, it's not this meeting.
Oh, it's not this meeting today?
The following meeting, the following.
It'll be the next meeting.
Okay, so sorry, thank you, I'll be back.
Okay, I have, I assume that Mr. Mohill wanted to speak on the same issue. Okay, so we'll call you back during that meeting.
I'm sorry, the item with hiring Overland Pacific and Murphy, Inc., it's for acquisition agent services. Do we have to appropriate that, appropriate that amount now? Can't we wait until we need it? We might not need this. These services for another year?
This, this actually is a change order. The amount came through the budget. We're asking for the approval to do a change order in the contract. This is a citywide service, so that if there are any real estate functions, for instance, if we need an appraisal, a quick appraisal, for something any one of the departments wants to use, we funnel it through this contract. That's why it's on the city agenda, and it is there in reserve for somebody to use in any one of the departments.
And what happens when these funds are not used during the year?
They remain in the different departments' budgets, and then at the end of the year that they would be seen as savings.
Which department's budget will the $75,000 be in, to begin with?
We're asking for the contract to actually be amended, and then the funding would come from each different department as they use the service. Right now, we're just asking for the authorization to spend that money on that contract.
So we're not appropriating any, any funds currently?
No.
Any further questions or discussion?
Looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'll move items one, A, B, and C.
Second.
Yeah, there's-
A and C are agency moments.
Right, if somebody wants to make an agency motion first, and then a council motion.
I'll move A and C for-
Second, for the agency.
Both of those be taken together?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion, a second roll call, please.
Agency members Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Chair Friedman, Chair Manukian.
Yes, and I'll move item one, one B.
Second.
A roll call.
Council members Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
Okay, next item.
Two is Director of Public Works and Community Development regarding South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment, Zone Change, Municipal Code Text Amendments and Recommendations for Preferential Parking Districts for South Brand Boulevard. Two, one is a resolution amending land use elements of the general plan. Next item, ordinance for introduction relating to the repeal of South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan Amendments to Title V and Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995. Ordinance for introduction relating to zone changes in South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan area for his motion providing direction staff regarding amendments to preferential parking district policies within the South Brand Boulevard area.
Thank you, Mr. Foy.
Thank you. Briefly here what we have for the is items on preferential parking and also on zoning and signage for the South Brand area. The major purpose of this is to try to accommodate, at least from the zoning and signage standpoint, is to try to accommodate the needs that we see from the developers and the proposals that we're getting from them. We'd like to update a document which is twenty years old, and the kind of proposals we're seeing now almost all require variances, and that's kind of tantamount to just planning by variance, which is a good indication that your regulations need some adjustment. It's costly for applicants, confusing for the public, and we're trying to meet dealership needs and making it simpler and more workable. You will see in your staff report that under the recommendation section for the ordinance, there are alternate recommendations. One is the ordinance as proposed by the Planning Commission, and the second has three items in which there were some lingering concerns. Some of these concerns came to light only shortly before or at the Planning Commission meeting, so staff met again with the auto dealers and tried to nail down and focus these areas of concern, and I'm happy to say that of all the changes we proposed, there are only these three areas, and they're either minor or they're perfectly reasonable alternatives. The only other thing I would add is that if council chooses to introduce this ordinance, we would ask that its adoption be in two weeks. In the special meeting later this afternoon, there will be another ordinance which affects some of the same sections. So just for ease of administration, and in not changing a section in one ordinance and not changing it in another, we'd like to have those adoptions be on consecutive meetings instead of at the same meeting. So we would like to have the adoption of the South Brand plan, if it's introduced today, be two weeks from today, and the adoption of the pedestrian signs be one week from today. Okay? So without further ado, I'll go to Michael Nielsen.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency. Today's staff is introducing changes to the zoning code and revisions to preferential parking policies in the South Brand neighborhood. Some background on the South Brand area, it contains a mix of uses and a diverse array of multifamily neighborhoods and the largest auto row in the region, which is an important economic engine to the city. In August 2010, council directed staff to prepare zoning and parking solutions that better serve the residents and businesses in the South Brand area. Some of the goals behind the zoning and parking solutions for the South Brand neighborhood include zoning that ensures the success of local auto dealers and maintaining Glendale's competitiveness in the regional auto industry. We're looking to also maintain a vibrant mix of uses in the neighborhood, as well as maximizing street parking for residents and businesses alike, with the ultimate goal of improving the quality of life for all in the South Brand Boulevard neighborhood.
Excuse me, is it possible for the PowerPoint to be on television as well?
In regards to the neighborhood affected by the parking policy recommendations that we're proposing today, this includes the area shown in orange on the map, which is generally bounded by Colorado Street to the north, San Fernando Road to the south, Glendale Avenue to the east, and Central Avenue to the west. In regards to the zoning and sign recommendations being presented today, this is generally bound by the South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan area, which is a slightly smaller, smaller area, which you see as the red boundary on the map. Prior to presenting these recommendations to City Council and Redevelopment Agency today, over a dozen outreach meetings have been conducted with a variety of stakeholders from January through November 2011. The comments received by these stakeholders have been incorporated into the revisions and recommendations being presented today. In regards to the purpose of today's meeting, we will be discussing the zoning and parking recommendations, but we will also be presenting to council and the redevelopment agency resolutions, ordinances, and motions for council and agencies consideration, including a resolution to approve amending the land use element of the general plan, an introduction of an ordinance to repeal the South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan, and amendments to Title V and Title 30 of the zoning code, introduction of an ordinance to approve zone changes, and a motion to implement policy changes for preferential parking. With that, I will introduce Wolfgang Kraus, who will be going over the zoning and sign recommendations in detail, and he'll be followed by Jono Bagdanian to discuss the parking policy recommendations for the South Brand neighborhood.
I'm going to open the public hearing when we get to the speakers, as opposed to now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor Friedman, members of council, I'm going to go over the, the basic zoning changes proposed. I'll hit some of the highlights and fill in some of the details, and then after that, you can feel free to ask me some questions. Again, the main function is we're proposing to eliminate the South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan, so when we do that, we have to replace it with conventional zoning. And some of the standards, as Tim Foy mentioned, needed some modification based on past history and some of our own reanalysis of the regulations that we had. So what we're, what we're basically doing by eliminating the plan is simplifying a couple of the standards, and certainly simplifying the zoning pattern, and making some tweaks to the sign standards for auto dealers in the South Brand area. Again, the, the general consensus by most people was that we simply had too many different zoning districts in the general Brand Boulevard area, and some of the regulations were confusing. And of course, anytime you have a specific plan, you always seem to be jumping back and forth between the plan and the zoning ordinance, so that's no different here. And a little more than a year ago, you did direct us to make these changes, so that's what we're doing. We've had Planning Commission make their recommendations, and now it's time to do the final product. One of the changes we're proposing to make is the height limit. We're simplifying it from what it is. The ninety-foot standard is in effect now for the most part throughout the Brand Boulevard area. So we're trying to use as many of the standards as we can. So the ninety-foot is, is in the code now, but the thirty-five-foot height limit for a depth of forty feet adjacent to residential is new. It's a little different standard now, much harder to implement. Interior setbacks, there will be none, except that it'll be ten feet only when you've got the boundary line between commercial and residential zones. And there's a five-foot buffer in the same area, too, that includes semi-subterranean garages. But we're making that a little bit simpler than what we have in some of the other zones and what we have in the plan today. Right now, all surface parking lots, whether they're required parking for customers and employees, or whether they're vehicle display areas or storage areas for vehicles, are required to have one tree for every six parking spaces or major fraction thereof. We proposed initially to have a standard that that would not apply to vehicle display areas less than 10,000 square feet. The Planning Commission went with that, but they also said, even though you need the trees, you don't have to distribute them sort of throughout the parking area, you can cluster them. So that's what's in the draft ordinance that you see today. The auto dealers would still like to have no landscaping in those vehicle display areas, and they, I guess if asked, they'd probably say, we don't want them in any of our parking areas, whether they're required parking for customers and employees, or whether they're storage. So that's one of the areas that Tim mentioned is still, that there hasn't been consensus on. The landscape buffer on the street, right now, throughout the city, if you have a normal park, surface parking lot, you're required to have a five-foot landscape buffer, six-inch high concrete curbs all the way around, except in South Brand, where you have vehicle display areas, then it's three feet. Staff had proposed to increase that to five feet. The auto dealers, and that's what's in your draft, and that's what Planning Commission recommended, the auto dealers would still like that to remain at the current three-foot As far as the zoning map is concerned, it's not, it's much less complicated than what the, the current plan is. Basically, all the outlying areas, the surrounding areas other than Brand, the Central and Glendale Avenue, and the parts near San Fernando to the south, most of those are Zone CG, and that's going to go back to C three, which is the zone that it used to be. What that means is, the only real difference will be you'll have, be able to have automotive-related uses like auto repair garage back in there, and there are already some of those that are legal non-conforming, and they'll be legal again. So we, as you know, we have three different height districts for C three, one, two, and three, except for the two-block area around Memorial Hospital. It's going to be Height District One, that is a fifty-foot height limit. It's exactly the same height limit that's in the plan today for CG. And the ninety-foot height limit for Height District Three that we're proposing for the two blocks in the area of Memorial Hospital is ninety feet, no change from the current plan. So again, very little real change for all those outlying areas. And again, this is one of the maps, and we'll go through the maps. You can see the Brand Boulevard area is going to be this new zone, the CA Commercial Auto Zone, and for the most part, that's replacing all of the Brand Boulevard zones and the overlay zones that were in the plan. And this is another view. Do we go back to the last one? Well, let's, let's just move ahead. We'll go through these. These basically, you can see Glendale Avenue, the multifamily zones, we'll stay the multifamily zones with a couple of exceptions. And really, there's been support for all of these changes with two exceptions. One is the, there's a pocket that is Zone Multifamily Residential with one of these South Brand overlay zones that the property owner wanted to maintain the ability to continue to have residential, and so if the council wanted to do that, that's at the north end, it's where the Cars 911 is located, the east end of that, there's two lots there that are currently used for surface parking for car dealers. So we've, the staff felt and Planning Commission agree that the CA Zone, the commercial auto, would be much better, allow greater flexibility for commercial use, whether it's auto-related or not. But if the council wanted to, we could leave it at the multifamily, and we could have a conventional parking overlay zone that wouldn't allow the same kind of commercial flexibility, but it seems to be what the property owner wants. The only other comment we had was a small section of one of the southerly blocks, kind of the same thing. There's a multifamily residential, I think it's R 2250, with one of these Brand Boulevard overlay zones on it that allows some car dealer use. If the, if the council wanted to maintain that as, as multifamily, we could do that and then have a conventional parking overlay, so that would be consistent with the, the rest of the block. I don't know if we could find that one, maybe back up one.
Can we?
Three or four. That's not it. One more. That's not it either. We're close. No. Is that it? Sing one. Well, anyway, I'll move, I'll try and find that for you. It's, it's where the New Horizons project was proposed to go. The, the project was going to go all the way through from Glendale Avenue to, to the residential street. The Glendale Avenue portion is going to be rezoned to, from CG to C three, which will still allow residential, but if we rezone the, the, the side street to, to CA, we won't allow residential. So again, if the council wants to maintain the multifamily, R 2250, we can do that. And again, that would be consistent with the northern part of the block, which is R 2250 with a parking overlay zone. We've got some other standards that aren't highlighted here. We've got standards for bridges across rights of way, although that will still require individual review by the council to vacate the air rights. Now, as far as signs are concerned, the changes that we're proposing are strictly related to car leasing, sales, rental agencies in the new CA Zone. This won't apply outside of that. We're proposing to actually decrease the wall sign area from two square feet per linear foot of wall length to one and a half, but we're proposing to allow more signs, more wall signs on the, essentially the Brand Boulevard frontage. When the buildings are more than a hundred feet wide, you'll get a second wall sign, and then in addition to that, you'll get two smaller eighteen-inch-high signs. So you could have a total of as many as four wall signs, two normal ones plus two eighteen-inch-high ones, because of the different functions of these car dealers.
If it's smaller than a hundred feet?
Then you're still looking at one wall sign.
At one and a half.
At one and a half, right.
Instead of two.
Instead of two, right.
So basically, it's penalizing the smaller businesses.
Well, it's, I think we did a survey, and virtually all of the regular car dealers have frontages more than a hundred feet.
You mean by a regular car dealer?
Well, the, the, the main dealers.
Opposed to an irregular car dealer.
Yeah, as opposed to the, the independent, maybe a car rental place might, might not be as big. Anyway, the, we haven't had any complaints about that, that that's not going to work. So really, it's, it's providing a little extra flexibility.
But why change it from two to 1.5? What is-
There was some discussion that-
Someone likes 1.5 better than two, is that it?
No, I think we originally, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, we were going to one-to-one, and then there was a sort of a compromise.
But why?
I think because nobody's using two-to-one. I think hardly anybody is actually taking advantage.
So if we make it smaller, more people will use it?
No, it's just, it's sort of a trade-off. Again, if you have objections to that, we can leave it at two.
I'm just trying to get to, to the logic as to, was there, if there was no glut of signs at two feet, two square feet, then why change it to one and a half?
I guess it was just sort of back and forth, talking to the car dealers as to what they really need. If you don't really need the two-to-one, but you really need the additional number, well then-
Extra sign.
Let's, let's have that trade-off.
If they have one over a hundred feet, they can put two two-square-foot signs, as opposed to 1.5.
Well, if you had, let's say, a hundred and one foot long frontage on Brand, today you could have one 202-square-foot sign.
Right.
If this goes through.
You can have two smaller signs.
Two smaller, two small, well, actually, two regular-sized smaller signs plus the eighteen-inch-high signs.
Saying like-
All totaling 1.5 times 101.
Okay. You keep saying, you keep labeling everything regular.
Well, as opposed to these secondary signs that have the-
As opposed to irregular signs or regular dealerships anyway.
No. As opposed to the secondary wall signs that have that eighteen-inch-high limit.
Okay, I'm still, don't understand the difference between having, you know, two two-square-foot signs and an eighteen-foot, the eighteen-foot, the eighteen-inch-high sign as well. What's the difference between having two two-square-foot ones or two one and a half? How does that benefit the city?
Well, it's, I think it's, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. It seems to meet the needs of the larger car dealers because they have different, some different products.
The smaller signs, these smaller signs?
No, well, the smaller signs would help identify different entrances and some functions. The larger ones are mainly to get the, the corporate brand names separated from the actual name of the dealer.
Okay.
Whether it's Star Ford, and then the Ford Blue Oval, or-
Let's not advertise people now.
Anyway, as, we've had the, for the record, the two-to-one's been on the books since August of 1973, so this would be the first change to that that we've proposed.
Okay.
All other businesses will get, still continue to get one square foot per linear foot.
I, I understand that we want, we don't want a glut of signs.
No.
And we would use the zoning ordinances to limit the, a glut of signs.
That's correct.
But since you said that there wasn't a glut of signs because people weren't using it.
They weren't using the area.
Right.
They weren't maximizing the area.
Right, so in my opinion, in my, in my mind, the question is, well, why change it if no one's using it?
So it's okay with staff if you'd like to leave it at two-to-one.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to get to the, to the, you know, thought process that, staff and the Planning Commission went through to come to one and a half as opposed to two, if no one's using one, if no one's using two.
Well, there might be one or two, but generally, generally-
There isn't a glut, I mean.
No.
Okay.
Stephanie, did you want to try to shed some light on this?
There was an additional consideration, because currently, there's only one wall sign allowed per frontage. The concern was if there are more signs allowed per frontage, then there would be a maximization of the signage area. So as you mentioned before, the regulations, the trade-off from two-to-one to 1.5-to-one is to prevent, as you mentioned, a glut of signs. That was, that was the trade-off.
But there isn't a glut of signs now, so.
Because in our perception, there was, there's not a glut of signs because there's only allowed one sign. With these provisions, if your frontage is more than 200 feet long, you can now have four signs on the Brand Boulevard frontage, so that that limitation would, would then allow you a more, more signage but less sign area to prevent the visual glut of signs. That was the rationale for that.
So if no one's using the two-feet signs, if we make it smaller and allow more, you think, in your opinion, more people would use it?
If we allow more signs, there would be the ability to maximize the sign area.
Okay, what is, the question is, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm belaboring this point, but my question is, what is the difference between having two one-and-a-half-foot square-foot signs and two, two-feet square, two-square-feet signs? Difference?
It's, it's the overall area-
And don't tell me it's half a foot, half square foot difference between the-
It's, it's an overall area. The, the buildings are fairly, if you have a 200-foot-long building, you would be allowed 400 square footage of sign, which, as I mentioned, nobody is using right now because only one sign is allowed. If four signs are allowed, then potentially, there would be 400 square foot of sign, and we thought perhaps the city wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the city's interest to see that much area of signage.
Let me go to Mr. Conter.
Well, I think it gives the business people more flexibility. Just because we have it available doesn't mean they'll use it, but the way some of the buildings are configured, and lots, and just individual businesses, I'm-
One and a half versus two, is that?
Yeah, it gives them more flexibility. Maybe a bigger sign here, but a smaller one.
The number of signs is what the auto dealers specifically asked for. Again, if, if the council prefers the two-to-one with the additional number of signs, that's what we'll do.
I'm just thinking of all the different dealerships and the size. Now, we've got big ones that are at the street, others that are more traditional, Star Ford, for instance, more late, I mean, it just gives them more flexibility.
Right.
But, but if they have a, if they have a two-foot allowance, they can use a one-and-a-half square-foot sign, right? They don't have to use the two-square-feet one?
No, they don't have to.
So it has to be twelve, two square feet? They can't use a smaller sign?
Um, no, they- No, they don't have to. That's the maximum allowed by code.
Right. But that's the maximum, but they can use a smaller sign?
They could.
Yeah, but staff's suggesting this because what they really want is more signs, and if we allow them to have more signs, then the idea was to make the allowable size a little smaller because otherwise you're going to, you could have four or two giant signs as opposed to a slightly smaller sign. I think that that's a good trade-off. I mean, I don't think anybody would want to see four giant signs on there. Just because they're not using it now doesn't mean that someone won't necessarily in the future. But let's move on, and we can have a discussion later.
Is this two square feet?
Well, it's a little bit bigger.
A little bit bigger?
It's not two square feet.
Two square feet per linear foot. So if I have a 200-foot-long building on Brand, I get 400 square feet of wall sign on that wall.
Okay. All right. That clarifies a little bit about it.
There's no right or wrong to that. It's just a matter of what we want to see. Car dealers have gotten two-to-one since '73. Everybody else has gotten one-to-one. Now, this, again, this will only affect car dealers in the South Brand CA zone. It won't affect anybody else.
Right. Because...
Because we're just doing these changes for the CA zone.
Right.
Now, we're kind of doing the same thing for ground signs. Right now, it's a two-to-one ratio based on the lot frontage. So if I have 100 feet of lot frontage, I get a 200-square-foot sign. The maximum is like 600 and something, so nobody's using that. Maximum height is 57 feet. None of the new signs are approaching that. So again, the car dealers would prefer to have flexibility to have more ground signs, and so this is another sort of compromise. If you want more than one sign and you've got 200 feet of frontage on Brand...
What is a ground sign?
Freestanding. Could be a monument, could be a pole sign.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be either one, something that's not attached to the building.
Okay.
You mentioned balloons in the report. Is that coming up or...
That's coming up, yeah. If I forget, I'll mention it. So originally, we were planning on having all signs at 35 feet, but since some of them are larger than 35 now and they want the flexibility to change them, this was sort of the compromise we reached sort of at the planning commission level or just before. In other words, if you want to maintain or erect two signs, both your ground signs have to be 35 feet maximum. If you want to keep your taller one or put up a taller one, you can have one, and it can go up to 57 feet high. Again, that 57-foot number goes back to 1973 as well. And for the same reasons, okay, you'd like, you'd like more flexibility. We'd like a little bit lower sign. You agree that 57 feet is probably excessive, so, and we certainly don't need the 600 and some odd square foot maximum that's allowed for car dealers. So again, this is the compromise that was reached. Temporary signs. Right now, the car dealers in South Brand can have banners, flags, pennants, and balloons, but they have to be part of a sign program. That's not something that they like going through. So we've had very few takers in the many years that we've had this provision. Originally, we didn't allow any banners, and then we made some provisions for South Brand car dealers, but we've only had two or three or four takers in all these years as far as actually applying for a sign program to erect banners. So what we've done is we've eliminated the whole reference to a sign program, and we will have two types of banners that will be allowed. Sort of the light pole banners that we allow now under a sign program, 10 square feet maximum each. That's the number that's in the code now with the sign program. But all you'll have to do is just get a sign permit. No more sign program, so we won't be regulating the design of these. You can have as many as you want, provided the light poles are in the right place and not too close together unless they're old. Essentially, it's exactly the same thing that's in the code now, but without a sign program. And you'll get to get a permit once, and then provided you don't change the location or the size, you get to change them out. Now, in addition to that, we're proposing to allow larger 50-square-foot temporary banners. Again, a banner's a banner under the sign program, so no longer will you have to apply for that, and no longer will be concerned with the design of the sign. However, you will be limited to two of those if you want something larger than 10, you want something approaching 50 square feet. You do have to get a permit every time you do it, every time you display it, and 60 days is the maximum that staff and planning commission recommend. The car dealers would like 90 days, so the draft that's in front of you says 60, but if you feel that 90 days allows greater flexibility, then we can bring that back to you. Again, this is a total, in any given calendar year, you'll be able to either for 60 or 90 days put up a temporary banner. So again, you can do two days at a time, two days here, a week there, a month there, whatever, whatever total is 60 or 90 days. As the footnote says, because we want to limit the cost of those, because they have to do it every time, we're proposing to come back with a fee resolution when this ordinance is voted on that will, by the time we're done, be around the range of, I mean, the base fee we're proposing is 110. By the time you add in the surcharges, it should be around $125, and there'll be no plan check fee. That's the only reason we have to do this. If we didn't have the plan check fee, it would be just a regular sign permit. So that's what we're shooting for, is an ultimate cost of approximately $125. And in summary...
What about the balloons?
The balloons? I knew I'd forget. Balloons...
Here's my question. I know that we're allowing balloons, which we're allowed now, but what about those balloons that you see in some car dealerships that are 100 feet high and have the big giant balloons on top?
Those aren't allowed. Well, first of all, balloons are allowed only, just like banners today, only allowed South Brand-specific plan for car dealers, but there's limitations, and those are being kept. 18-inch diameter, and there's a height limit above the ground that's in, I don't know if it's 20 or 30 feet.
Okay.
So yeah, the larger balloons that look like ones that can carry people, those don't meet today's criteria, and they won't meet the criteria that's in your draft ordinance.
Do we allow Mylar balloon displays?
There's no...
I only ask because I know GWP has a real problem with them with their power lines.
There's no material mentioned in the code, either the proposed code or the existing code. And again, you have to apply for a sign program to get those under today's code. Car dealers in the South Brand Boulevard-specific plan area will get to put those up without that, and there won't be any permit for those.
I just wanted to be sure it wasn't those giant...
No, no. We still have the 18-inch rule in effect, so the giant ones, no, we won't be able to do those.
Mr. Conter?
18-inch per balloon?
Per balloon.
Can you do multiple sort of birthday balloons?
Sure.
And there's no restriction on that?
No.
Because I've always wondered, do balloons sell cars?
No.
You know, and I drive down...
Some of us don't think so, but...
It's beyond me, though.
It attracts attention to the location.
It attracts attention to balloons, you know?
Yeah. You tie the balloon to the car, you might sell that car.
Is that how you buy your cars?
That's how I buy the cars, yeah. How many balloons are on a car?
Obviously, this debate about what kind of signs and how many signs sell cars has been going on since before I started working here, when they were talking about the sign ordinance in '73. So there's never been any documentation that staff has seen regarding any of this. So, I mean, it's pretty obvious when you're talking about the permanent signs, but these temporary signs, again, we've never seen anything that says there's an increase in business or a decrease in business if you do or don't use these things like balloons.
Have they ever been nuisances in our city?
Well, we haven't allowed them since 1973, and then we only allowed them as part of the summer.
Mentioned balloons.
Yeah, we haven't allowed balloons as advertising since 1973, other than what we have in the code now.
Right. Have we seen any kind of nuisance regarding, has someone gone out and purchased 10,000 balloons and put it all over?
No, but we've had some violations, but it's one of those violations that we haven't had too many of until maybe the last couple of years.
On the other hand, there are other cities where I think if we allowed the type of signage that they allow, signage and balloon displays, I think our residents would not be very happy with that.
Yeah, again, it's trying to establish a sort of a balance of what's somewhat aesthetically pleasing, what's necessary to do business, and still have, you know, a kind of environment that Glendale, that Glendaleans are used to seeing. So in summary, again, we're eliminating the South Brand-specific plan, replacing it with conventional zoning, making some modifications to the setback requirements. I mentioned the, the only setback I mentioned was the interior setback next to residential zone. Right now, there are street-side setbacks for the side streets based on the distance from the residential zone. We're getting rid of those entirely, so there'll be a lot more design flexibility if you're building a new building. Simplifying the zoning standards, again, primarily by the tweaks I mentioned, and then the one zone for South Brand rather than the multiple zoning districts we have in the specific plan, and the sign standards that I just mentioned. So we've got three, three things that we'd like you to consider. The first is an actual resolution to amend the land use element to get rid of on the map the reference to the South Brand Boulevard-specific plan. So that's something you could actually vote on today, requires only three votes to pass. And then the other two are ordinances. One, to actually change the zoning code, and there's some housekeeping stuff in Title V that relates to arcade devices because it mentions zoning, so it mentions the South Brand planned zone, so we need to get rid of those. And then an ordinance for the actual zoning map changes, so those can be introduced today, and ultimately, they'll require four votes to pass. So I'll stop here and ask if you have any further questions before we go on.
Ms. Van Byn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the agency. Just before we move on, in reference to the ordinance for introduction at 2A, that is the one amending the zoning code, Title V and Title 30. At the end of that, Section 29 is a pipeline provision that we include for those applicants and projects that are already in the process, and there were just a couple of minor tweaks or modifications that we wanted to make to that language before it gets introduced. So if I could just read that in, and that would, so that it would read, "Projects for which at least one development or tentative tract map application has been deemed complete prior to the effective date of this ordinance shall be reviewed under the zoning rules and regulations which were in effect on the day prior to the adoption of the ordinance." So that's the first sentence, and just the beginning of that sentence is changed. The second sentence reads, "The foregoing notwithstanding any applicant," and then we're inserting this language, "whose application has been deemed complete prior to the effective date of this ordinance may make a request in writing to the Director of Community Development that his or her application be reviewed under the zoning rules and regulations as amended by this ordinance." So what that all means is that if you've already got a deemed-complete application, you will be reviewed under the existing zoning regulations before the adoption of this ordinance unless you make a written request that your project be reviewed under the new regulations that Wolf has just described to you. So just a couple of minor changes to clarify that language in Section 29.
Is it generally deemed complete or submitted?
It's deemed complete after 30 days. That gives the, under Permit Streamlining Act, that gives the planning department the opportunity to review the application to make sure that all the information that's required to be in that application is there, and typically, if it isn't, then there's a response in writing within 30 days. So once it's deemed complete, it's in process.
Do we know how many are deemed complete at this point?
I have to refer to the planning department for that.
I'm not aware of the number. I suspect there are very few.
Are there any that are submitted?
We have, we know of a car dealer in the works, and I'm not sure if there's anything else that we've really heard about that would be affected by this. But again, applicants need to keep in mind that, for the most part, these rules are simpler and in some cases more liberal, so I feel a lot of applicants would be better off under the new rules. So usually, language like that is created to, when laws are getting more strict, which is generally the direction that they go in. So the only thing we don't want is to mix and match. In other words, you can't take one standard from the old code and one standard from the new code. So, but as Gillian said, you know, we've got 30 days to deem them complete. We could deem them complete before then. The idea is if people have invested a lot of design expense at this point relying on the existing standards, we want them to be able to finish the project as long as they follow through with it.
Mr. Mnuchin, I also believe there is one, if they haven't submitted, they will shortly on that condition that we talked about where there was a housing proposal on three properties, two of which are proposed to go to commercial or CA and would not allow housing. I think that is one other application that might be pending.
And I know initially it was said that there were three areas where the planning commission did not agree with staff. What were those areas?
The first one is the, where, well, where there wasn't agreement, not where planning commission didn't agree with staff, but where there's still a difference of opinion, not consensus.
Right.
From the public, there were those two areas to be rezoned CA where the property owners wanted them to have the ability to have residential, so that's one area. In terms of the code, there was the one tree for every six parking spaces for areas larger than 10,000 square feet, and then there was the three-foot versus five-foot landscape buffer between a vehicle display area and the sidewalk, basically. We're proposing to change it to five to be consistent with everything else. Car dealers wanted it left at three, and have I forgotten anything? Oh, yeah. The, as I mentioned, the temporary, the temporary banners, the 50-square footers, the dealers wanted 90 days in a calendar year rather than 60 days. So those are actually four, four different, three code and one mapping issue where there wasn't consensus. Otherwise, we either got neutral comments or we've got support from a number of small property owners outside of Brand and on Brand that they like, they like what we're doing, especially with the flexibility of the uses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions on zoning before we move on to traffic? May I? Thank you. Mr. Nielsen or Jono?
Jono Bagdani will be next to talk about that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, as a member of the City Council, I want to give you the parking policy recommendations that has been reviewed by the Transportation Parking Commission. And essentially, the recommendations in summary are creating the provincial parking districts, modifying and simplifying the parking regulations that we currently have in terms of the petitioning for a provincial parking zone, simplifying the approval process for provincial parking. Currently, it goes to the Transportation Parking Commission after a petition is submitted. Adjust the cost and number of permits per household and provide an option for non-residents, in this case, businesses, to be able to park in a residential parking district, something similar to what we have in Montrose and near the Glendale Transportation Center where businesses are allowed to buy permit and park. Now, in those cases, are parking in off-street parking lots that are owned by the city. In terms of the creating provincial parking district, right now, the way our permit parking is, if you can go to the next slide, permit parking is within any street in the city, a resident can sign a petition, 75% of the residents have to agree. We implement provincial parking on the street. What we're recommending, instead of doing it street by street that we've done in the past, is to creating eight parking districts, which is what typically some of the cities in Southern California and other places in the nation have. in Southern California and other places in the nation have, is you have a parking districts and they have consistent parking requirements, parking regulations. Residents from one street are allowed to park on another street as long as it's in the same district. Currently, if we issue a permit parking on Street A and permit parking on Street B, residents from either one of those streets are unable to park on those streets, they, because each permit is assigned to that particular street. And what we've done is looking at the South Brand area, that has been under the consideration, and divided it into eight districts, and each one of these districts are approximately four blocks wide, so that we can look into the land uses in each one of those districts, look at the parking occupancy in those districts, and look at the residential and the commercial parking that is occurring on the street, and make adjustments that are more pertinent to each one of the districts instead of having it all the same in some of the districts and not the others. In the next slide, as you can see, currently, our parking regulation varies. We have streets like Windsor, which was recently implemented, that we have 24 hours, seven days a week parking requirement restrictions, except by permits, so residents are the only ones who can park on that street. We have other streets that in this area, on Magnolia, on Maryland, where we have the hours of parking is two-hour, except by permit, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Some, we have them on one side of the streets, some we have on the other side of the street. Essentially, what we're trying to do is have the similar regulation on each, in each district, try to eliminate the impact of shifting the parking from one street to the other once we establish a permit parking. And the standard regulations, essentially, what we're recommending is returning from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, except by permit, Sundays, the parking based on our surveys is not as much of a problem, with some districts that are, streets that are a problem, for example, near the St. Mary's Armenian Church, where Sundays are a lot of masses and activities near the church where the parking becomes, on-street parking becomes a problem. And what the commission, Transportation Parking Commission, after having input from the outreach meetings, we're recommending, council, that we essentially leave the existing parking districts alone. We do not change them, specifically Windsor, that has been successful, where we had a lot of employees parking on that street. We're saying leave the existing parking restrictions alone, keep them the same. And with the new recommendations that we're asking council to approve, that would be for the new parking, streets that will be within those districts and new regulations that will be consistent with each other. In the next slide, you see in terms of simplifying the permit approval process, currently, we require under the existing ordinance for permit parking, 75% of the residents have to sign a petition. In multifamily residential areas, it's a problem because you have residents who move in and out, and it's, it's very difficult to collect the signatures. We're recommending that instead of having it at the 75% or at the 51%, where some of the other cities have, we have petitions signed by 66% of the residents. Now, that could be a combination of single-family, multifamily, residential, depending on what's on a particular street. After we receive a petition, we do a verification of the signatures, we do parking surveys, and then we schedule it for the Transportation Parking Commission. A typical provincial parking can take somewhere between six to eight months from the day a resident comes to the city, gets a petition form, go through the signature process, we do the evaluation, go to the commission. Whereas under this process, if we get the signatures, 66% of the signatures, and then we've already established the districts, we know what the parking regulations are, we can issue, administratively issue, the permits to the residents, and this, in our estimate, can take somewhere between almost three through three and a half months. That includes installation of the sign and issuance of permits to the residents. So there is an advantage of reducing the process, simplifying the process. In the next slide, we also looked at the cost and the number of permits that are being issued. Currently, the cost of issuing a permit is $6, and we can issue unlimited number of permits to a residential unit as long as they can show that they have vehicles that are registered to an address. So typically, you know, an apartment, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, if they have two cars, three cars, or four cars, they will get that many permits as long as they show us their vehicle registration, they pay the $6 annual fee. And then, we also issue two guest permits to each residential unit. Again, because some of the residents who have driveways, they don't need to buy the permit, they still get the free two-guest permits. And there are some problems with that because some residents given away to employees, or sometimes we've noticed that they're being sold, and those permits, we cannot track them, so that's a problem. And we have also received input from the residents that limiting the number of permits that are issued in residential permit parking areas might be a good thing. So what we're recommending is to, first of all, looking at the cost of the permits. The cost of the permits have been the same for the last 20 years, where we had the provincial parking at from $6. We have not changed that. That really doesn't recover our cost of processing to permit. Typically, just the permit and the hanger that we issue, it costs about $5 right now. That does not include staff time that goes into the processing of the petition. So we're recommending that we increase the cost of the permit based on our cost recovery. It could be somewhere in the range of $25 to $30. We will be bringing back a fee resolution, city council, that is truly encompasses all the costs to, that is included in the processing of the permit, and it could, we're estimating that will be in that range. We are also recommending that we limit the number of permits to three per residential unit. You don't have to buy three, but you can get the maximum of three permits. And we're also recommending that we give each residential unit 30 passes, basically three guest permits. These are one-day passes that can only be used for that one day that it's being, the date has to be fixed on the, you can write the date, and you put the, the permit on, on the guest dashboard, and, and that will be only valid for that. If a resident uses all 30 of them, then they can come back and purchase them. Again, we're estimating $5 for 10 permits.
I have a question. I don't know if you can answer this, but I've heard a rumor that some apartment owners lease these apartments without parking spaces and then lease out the parking spaces to maybe people who work in the area or to other residents. Is there any truth to that? And if so, does that violate any of our codes?
As far as violation of the code, Madam Mayor, I may not be able to address that for the city attorney or planning, but we have also heard that, that there's no question that there are apartments that are being rented out without, without parking.
And is that?
And that, so the rent is cheaper if you rent it with parking versus if you rent it without parking. So some resident, a tenant may choose to do, rent the park, apartment without parking. There are garages that we've seen based on our field observation where we're doing parking occupancy surveys, they're full, there are, you know, classic cars parked in them, so potentially, whether it belongs to a tenant or somebody is renting the garage, we've heard that rumor too, that sometimes those garages are rented out to somebody who doesn't even live on that street. So those are some of the things, whether we can do something about it, if we verify it, I'll defer that to city attorney, but that is something we've also observed.
Your city attorney, would that violate our codes?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't believe so. I think, and I think we had looked at that issue before and determined it doesn't violate any of the codes. Obviously, new developments require to provide parking, it's required to construct it, but we don't have anything in our code, to my recollection, that prohibit the practice that you just described. If that's something, you know, if somebody, the council wants us to look at, we would, but my recollection is having looked, thinking about, having looked up this a number of years ago, the code doesn't prohibit it.
If we're requiring parking though, aren't we requiring parking so that the residents in that building can use that parking? Isn't that what's behind the whole idea of requiring parking for residential structure?
No doubt, that's, that's the intent, and, you know, 99% of the time, or even 90% of the time, that's how it's utilized because it's also a market issue with respect to, you know, property owners who are trying to lease out their units, but the code doesn't specifically require that that be provided for free.
Mavon, we can talk about that or not talk about that later if you like.
Sure. In, with respect to if we implement a district parking, currently in the area that I showed, the eight districts, we have a combination of residents parking on street, non-residents, in this case, auto dealers, commercial, retail, restaurant employees that are also parking on the street. There isn't enough parking for everybody, especially if an apartment or a business doesn't have off-street parking. So given what is existing out there today, we have a limited number of provincial parking out there, we're recommending that if we were to go ahead with the permit parking districts, we also allow some of the on-street parking spaces be used by non-residents. Could be employees of the auto dealers, could be commercial, retail, employees of all the other land uses that are in the South Brand area. Basically, that the auto dealers or the other employees, non-residents, will be able to purchase permits based on the parking availability on the street, and we can sell those permits to, to them at a cost of about $120 per year. Again, this is based on our initial review of what other cities are charging compared to what the residential permit parking is. We will be reviewing that fee if the council desires to go and allow the non-residential permit issuance, and it will be back part of our fee resolution in terms of establishing a fee for the non-residential permits also. As far as how many can be issued on a typical street, the transportation parking recommended that we allow only 25% of the available spaces on a particular, on a typical street be issued permits to the non-residents. So let's say, for example, if there's 12 parking spaces available, only three permits to be issued to the non-residents. We have reviewed this, this recommendation, we've discussed it with a number of the business establishment, and given the fact that every street is different in the South Brand area, we have streets that have parking, commercial on one side, residential on the south, on the other side, or one-third or two-thirds of the street is residential or commercial. We think it will not be really practical to establish a 25% factor in terms of determining the non-residential permits. So we're asking city council to allow staff to evaluate every street that we have done in the past on a case-by-case basis and issue number of permits we think is practical that does not impact the residential parking or the non-residential parking. So on a typical street, if during the day we do a survey and we see there's enough parking available, we will allow more than 25% of permits to be issued to non-residents. And then we can adjust it on an annual basis. We will do the survey, and if we see there is a serious impact to the residential parking, we can adjust the number of permits that we issue on an annual basis to the non-residents. So this is a change to what the Transportation Parking Commission recommended.
But Jono, I thought that you were not going to be doing it on a street-by-street basis. I thought you were doing it by district.
But within the district, in a, in a district, if we have three streets that have, that have petitioned to have permit parking, we will look at those three streets, we will look at the parking occupancy, we'll look at how many permits are being requested by the residents, and then based on that, we will issue non-residential permit. We will also look at it in terms of not issuing all the permits on one street, the non-residential. We will divide them among two or three streets, depending how many streets we have that are being considered for permit parking.
So I don't understand then the purpose of the districts. If it's still up to an individual street and if the regulation, if the restriction would only be on that particular street, then what do, what do the, what do the districts do?
Within the district, we will keep as consistent, which we're going to try to make it as consistent overall, so if you park from one street to another, which is the case right now, you don't, you're not exposed to different parking requirement. But in, depending on how many requests we get in one district, let's say in District One, if everybody is asking for Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday parking, and from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, then the regulation in District One, that's what we will implement. In District Two, we may have a different.
So the rules then would be consistent throughout the district, but it would still be up to each individual street to petition for the restricted parking on their street?
Right. We will do our best to accommodate their needs because from street to street, from where we have, for example, we have some auto dealers that do not have adequate off-street parking, and we have auto dealers that do have enough off-street parking. So within that district, we will look at that. Another problem area is where the Armenian Church is, St. Mary's Church, where there is a problem with the on-street parking on Lomita, on Chestnut, throughout the week. However, all these years, we've never received a provincial parking request for that. So working with the church, working with the residents in that area, which I believe will be District Two, we will look into, see what would be the best parking regulations and combination that would help the residents, help the church and the businesses that are there off of Central to be able to, to do their parking, because it's not the ideal condition right now out there. Right now, if anybody came in and did a petition, we would, if it meets the code requirement, we will implement it regardless of the other businesses that have been there for a number of years and they don't have off-street parking. So we're trying to have a compromise recommendation that will fit the needs of them and make it as flexible as possible. So in summary, our recommendation is create the parking districts that will be flexible, modify, simplify the parking requirement, making it as consistent and possible within the districts, simplify the approval process, we think we can cut down the time that it takes to implement permit parking, have a cost recovery of the permit, permit issuance, and limit the number of permits that we're issuing to the, to the residents, and provide an option for the non-residents that does not exist today under the current provincial permit parking code, to our non-residents to park in the residential permit parking areas. We're asking city council's approval motion to implement the policy changes that I've outlined in my presentation and in the staff report.
I have a question. And first, I'm going to open the public hearing just so I don't forget to do it later. So talk to me about peak demand for parking and what the hours are of the car dealerships, and whether it's primarily the car dealership employees that we're talking about, or if there are other businesses maybe on Central and on Glendale that are also impacting this. So my question is, if it's, is it the case that the, the non-residential parking demand is high during the day when the businesses are open, but the residential demand is higher in the evening, or is it all sort of mixed up? When are the parking crushes happening?
In general, looking at the, the South Brand area, the, throughout the day, starting from almost 8:00 AM to about 6:00 PM, is where the non-residential parking peaks are. So we have employees that are parking on the residential street as they're going to work, as they arrive to work, they park on the residential street. The residential peak starts approximately after 6:00 PM, where people are coming back from work, and then they park on street all night, and then early in the morning, most of the parking spaces are occupied until the residents start leaving for work. There are some streets that you may have more residents that are retired or they're working from home, and those streets actually have a peak essentially all day.
But, but 6 o'clock, the car dealerships don't close at 6?
No, there is a little bit of an overlap between, a car dealership approximately goes 9:00 PM, but the car dealership also have mechanics that are working, and there's a large number of them, and so that, the service base basically closes around 6:00 PM, so those are leaving at that time. But the salespeople or some of the other establishments that are working beyond the 6:00 PM hour, they're still, you know, working and they're parked on the street.
I'm going to ask GTV6 to please try to have on camera the person who's speaking. Is that possible? Thank you.
And then, just to give you also another area of concern is the, like Windsor was, when we established 24/7, 24-hour, seven days a week, the residents complained that there's a majority of residents are actually at home throughout the day. There are a lot of retirees also that are home, so in that, in that case, basically you have a high demand throughout the day compared to some of the other streets that residents are working, leaving the home in the morning, and they come back in the afternoon, so the parking occupancy could be between 50% to 60%. So we did a complete survey of every street in the, in the South Brand area, and basically, I have a detailed survey of part of occupancy on each one of those streets. And a survey of employees that we did, a thousand surveys were sent out to the employees that were asked where they were parking, and the one statistic that is most interesting would be that, you know, school employees, about 3% of them are parking on street. Hospital employees, approximately 2% of them are parking on street because the Memorial Hospital, most of them have, have off-street parking and they're parking the structure. Auto dealers, based on the survey responded, 60% are parking on street. These are auto dealers that don't have enough off-street parking, so their employees are spread over depending on where the parking is available. But approximately 20% of all the other commercial establishments that are there, whether retail restaurants, are also parked relying on the on-street parking because they don't have off-street parking. Again, it varies from one district to the other. The district which is District One, RD, if you can go back to that one, I would say that has the highest parking demand. that has the highest parking demand, which is District One here. Here, the parking occupancy on the average is about 83%. Some streets are higher, some streets are lower.
Northwest side?
And closer to the Colorado area, that's where the, again, it's adjacent to the Galleria, so there is employees that are parking from the Galleria in that area. The next busiest section will be in District Four, is at about 80% what the parking occupancy is. This is based on a one-day survey and our survey that we've done in some of the other streets on a, you know, case-by-case basis.
No, no, I remember when we found out that Nestle had a very well-intentioned program where if their employees took alternative transportation to work and weren't parking in the lot, they would pay them, and what we found out was that they actually were driving to work, but they were parking in the residential streets. I hope that we remedied that.
Yes, we did.
And do we have the same issue going on here with the Galleria or the Americana? Have we looked at that?
The Galleria and Americana does not have, you know, they have free parking, basically, and there are, during the holidays, we know that both Americana and Galleria, they ask their employees to park outside the parking space. They don't allow them to park in the parking structure. So there is an impact on street because they also have a lot of temporary employees that they come to work. But in case of Nestle, we did take care of that by implementing professional parking on Glenox and some of the side streets. That basically mitigated the problem. So some of the employees went back and parked in the structure, but not all of them.
John O., do we have to be concerned about the fee structure today? Because I just got one email questioning the fees. You said you'd be back with a fee structure analysis, so...
Yes.
Don't worry about the fees today.
At this point, we were, it was a very rough estimate. We still have to work with finance to actually do a cost recovery and also...
Are you talking about monthly fees?
The annual.
The annual parking fees?
Yes.
So don't get locked up into that today.
Yes, we recommend council that, we just wanted to give you an order of magnitude. However, we'll come back to you with, if it comes out to be $15, and if council wants to even gradually increase it from $6 to whatever number that is, that's your choice. We can give you some options.
Considering that some of the council meetings lately, fee structures have been a significant item, the council colleagues and the public. Nobody wants a fee increase, nobody wants a tax increase, so I want to make sure we didn't get off into fee structures today when that's not the topic.
That will be our recommendation, yes.
All right. Are there any questions right now? I have cards. Let me go to the public.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify my answer to the previous question about the parking? Tim actually did find the code section, and my memory was half correct. We did address this issue before, and as a result, we actually changed the code as a result of it. So there's a provision now in Title 30, which provides parking for residential uses shall be maintained for the exclusive use of occupants and their guests unless otherwise allowed by the code. So that particular issue as far as used by other, whether it's, you know, a commercial use or other, you know, tenants of other buildings, that's been addressed by this code section. Doesn't necessarily mean they have to provide it for free to their tenants, but they can't provide it to anybody else other than the occupants and their guests.
So while, while we hear from the public, maybe somebody from staff can contact Neighborhood Services and find out what kind of enforcement's been done on that, okay? If any. Thank you. Okay, I have three cards. If anybody would like to speak who hasn't turned in a card, please do so now. Joe Renado, followed by Johnny Harrison. I apologize in advance for mispronouncing anybody's name. It will, it always happens.
As long as you don't call me late for dinner, we'll...
I won't call you late for dinner. I won't be calling you to dinner at all, though.
Mayor Friedman, esteemed council, my name is Joe Renado, and it's an honor to be here. I'm here in support of the zone change and removal of the specific plan. Why I'm here is my grandparents came here in 1912, and the Renado family's always been here, worked here since that time. And my grandparents bought the lot. I have a single lot now down on Brand. They bought it in 1922, and since the specific plan was put in place, it's always has been a burden to the family to find a quality tenant and to, we can't really upgrade the property or do anything because of the restrictions being it's under 13,000 square feet. So I'm just a local businessman, I have local employees, and I just came here to voice my opinion that I'd like to see that changed. I'd want to thank the Planning Department and Mr. Wolfgang Kraus and staff for making it clear, for hearing the needs of the small property owners such as myself, and maybe pushing through this change. So I want to thank you for your consideration.
You support?
Pardon me?
You support what we've been presenting?
I support the change, yes, sir.
What kind of property is it?
It's a single lot. Right now, it's rented out as a parking lot.
Okay.
And 1516 South Brand, and that's about all I can do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Johnny Harrison to be followed by Mike Mohill.
Hello, Johnny Harrison, Vice President, General Manager of Lexus of Glendale and President of Brand Boulevard of Cars. I'm going to talk a little bit about parking because that seems to be a topic for residents and business throughout. I've been involved with this since the start of the parking process, and I will tell you again, as I did last week, staff has done an amazing job with this. Even though we don't always agree with everything they've got, as well as you've heard many times today about what we would like to have and what they're recommending is a difference, they've kept the door open both for residents and business alike, which is very impressive, I will tell you, especially in this, this day and age. You know, parking's not always a bad thing. You know, that also, that tells you to the aspect of there's a parking problem, that, you know, we do have more residents, we have more businesses, we have more employees that are doing great things in the city, so it's not always a bad thing. So try not to be, try not to be nearsighted as it relates to it being a problem. It's actually a good problem to have. As parking goes for both residents and business, there's a lot of car dealerships that do not have onsite parking for employees as well as inventory and, and what you've got available, and there, we've been working around it. The study that was done on our parking was been over a year ago, which in turn has had huge changes, both from the Americana, the hospital, as well as the Brand Boulevard of Cars, about where we not only park our inventory, but as well as where our employees park. And Mayor, as you mentioned about rideshare programs, pretty much most of all the dealership offer a multiple variety of those, from Metro passes, complete 100% payment for Metro passes, to bus rides, to shuttle services throughout, as well as off-site parking that we do pay for, as well as shuttle back and forth. So we're trying to do our best to do that. And as the study is, as I mentioned, over a year ago, recently been done to take a look at the process of parking, it's done quite better over the last particular year. So I'll keep that in, just please keep that in mind as we're going through here. As you mentioned about fees, yeah, fees have been talked about for, from residents all the way through to businesses. $120 a year for a parking permit compared to the $6 is, well, somebody else can do the math there and say it's sort of one-sided as it relates to that. Being a business in Glendale, $6 doesn't even cover the cost of a permit as it relates to that. So being fair and equal is, is good across the board for both businesses and residents. So I hope in turn you will take our recommendations for parking as well as what staff has done and, and get the best plan for us. All right? Thank you.
Question?
Yes?
Your building is a relatively new building, right?
It is.
Do you have enough sufficient parking for your employees?
Right now, we're at 100%.
Within, within your facilities?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's the way it was designed.
That's right.
That's the question.
Yeah, a good question. But it is, you don't want to talk about clustering of trees or buffer zones?
Jenny Brewer will follow me with that particular question because I only have five minutes. These topics can take a little bit longer than that to talk about because...
I have a question. How do you go about monitoring if you do your employees? I mean, it would make sense, it would automatically park in a secured lot rather than park on the street, but do you have any way of telling where they're parking?
Other than just visual and watching, that's pretty much how we do it. I mean, it's, you know, it's like watching a stop sign, how many people stop and don't stop, and...
So the employees come in in their personal cars and just park, and that's it? There's no sticker for employee parking?
We do, we do have parking on our facility for, for parking for employees, but, you know, am I going to tell you that they don't park on the street or, or somewhere on the street and take the sticker off? Sure. I mean, it's, you know, that would be that...
That's what I mean. Your employees do have to have a sticker so they're permitted to park in the Lexus.
That's correct, yes. Correct. Okay? All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill.
Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman, council members, and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. I took some random notes here, nothing in specific order here, but I like to think about green. Talking about greening of Glendale, let's think about more landscaping in this auto land area. I see a lot of concrete in this area. Why don't we have more trees and shrubbery? Let's have some more setbacks for these properties. The BMW building is like 1,000 feet high. Why do we accept that? That's an ugly building. They had a bigger setback, it would have been sort of okay, but this sounds like an eyesore. Unacceptable. Height regulation is very important to me. Parking, parking for the residents locally, parking for the businesses. If you're going to raise the fees on the businesses, why don't you take that money and build a couple of buildings, parking structures on Brand Boulevard for the auto dealers and let them have their employees park in those structures? Why must they use the residential areas of the apartment owners and renters? Parking is, is a premium down there. When you have no parking, we allowed all this no parking in South Glendale, now we're paying that price. So let's have some parking structures on Brand Boulevard. I know this man who just came up here, Joe Ronaldo, he says he has a, he uses his lot for parking. Well, why doesn't he put, why doesn't the city pay him and put a three-story parking structure there? That's just one. Why do we want to increase signatures, the advertising? Do we want more clutter on Brand Boulevard? I always thought less signs were better. People go into a dealership not because of a sign. It's called price, customer service. It's not balloons, it's not a sign. Word-of-mouth advertising. Look at the internet. Do those people that are selling the internet, do they use balloons and 1,000-square-foot signs? No, it's word-of-mouth. Let's think about more green rather than concrete and asphalt. Let's, let's see. And again, let's go with the parking structure. I think a parking structure is very important for the employees who work in the dealerships. The residents, the tenants shouldn't have to pay the price. The dealers are making money, the city is making money. Don't make the landlords, the tenants pay for their profits, but share the wealth and the expense. Let's put several parking structures on Brand or on Central. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Mohill.
Jeannie Brewer is my last card.
Good afternoon, I'm Jeannie Brewer, Acura of Glendale. While each dealership is independently owned and operated by different men, women, and families on Brand Boulevard, we all have manufacturers who demand certain requirements for the physical layout of a dealership, and they're all different. I know staff has worked really hard at providing us information and ideas as to how they want Brand Boulevard to look. So this afternoon, I'm in favor of the South Brand specific plan with a few exceptions. We'd really like to maintain our three-foot buffer on the street level. For my dealership, that would mean if I have to go to a five-foot next time I want to pave my lot or something, I would probably lose 15 spaces of parking for display for my vehicles, either display or parking, one or the other. And as you've all heard this morning or this afternoon, parking is just at a premium there. And if a dealer displays vehicles on their lots, trees and carports detract from public seeing of our, from the public seeing our vehicles. Trees and all the birds and things that come out of them damage our paint on the vehicles. Carports prohibit the public to see the vehicles. So we, we really strongly feel these, these requirements need to stay out of the South Brand or the new plan. Our manufacturer has certain requirements for signage as well, and some of that was brought, was questioned. When we moved to Glendale six years ago, we could only put our big sign, our monument sign. We could not put Acura of Glendale on the side of our Boulevard or on the side of our building. We had to put it on the south side so people coming north could see the sign because there was only allowed one sign or one visual with the Acura implement, and that's why the two signs would be so helpful. I could have my monument sign, and I could have Acura of Glendale, and they're not real big. They're just, you know, this is Acura of Glendale on, in my case. And then one other thing regarding the parking. Please consider our competition when setting these new zoning and parking requirements. Our competition isn't with each other. Our competition comes from other cities. While each city needs are totally different, I would encourage Glendale to consider easy, convenient parking for our customers. Take a look at Van Nuys Boulevard, Colorado Boulevard, Alhambra, and the other cities to see if parking in front of their dealerships is convenient and free. I would agree that Glendale is different. Most of these areas do not have multiple uses in their dealership areas, but when I see various requirements for a tight area of space, I can only anticipate that parking will continue to have high demand. So you've heard a lot of comments today about the parking and probably will continue to. There's no easy solution, but I think staff has done a great job with coming up with something that we can all live with, and I would encourage you just to play, to be as fair as you possibly can with both the businesses and the residents. Thank you.
And I have a question for you two.
Yes.
And I know you had a very difficult time with your signage back six years ago when you were building the facilities. Again, the same question to you as I asked from the other gentleman. You have a relatively new facility. Do you have sufficient parking for your employees?
I don't, but not at my facility anymore. But we pay the Americana for my employees to park there.
Okay.
So as my inventory goes up and down, we can allow employees to park on the, in our area, but the secondary spot is at the Americana.
Wasn't the planning done when you were building the facility as to how much inventory you would need?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was, and we've grown...
How much employees you're going to have and how much parking you're going to need?
Yes, yes, that's all true. And we've grown since then, fortunately. So good news and bad news.
Yes, thanks to Glendale, everyone would like to have that problem growing, actually. So you don't have enough, do you use your employee parking for inventory? Is that, is that why you don't have enough?
Well, we've purchased additional off-site parking, and that, we either use that for storage or we use that for employee parking, both. It's a mix.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. I'm going to close the public hearing and go to the council. Mr. Cantaro.
Hey, I'll start. Well, let me echo what everyone else has said. I think the staff's done an incredible job, the planning staff, the redevelopment staff, the transportation, and head engineer in charge of parking. I think they've done a great job of putting this together. They've worked on it for quite a while, and I like the outcome. And they certainly had plenty of input from the public, both business and residential and property owners for multifamily neighborhoods as well as the commercial sector. So let me start. I just took some notes. In terms of the zoning on that particular parcel that runs from Glendale to the other street, I think it should stay multifamily. There's residential use on that side street, and so I think the zoning should continue.
Can you tell us where it is?
I don't remember the, what's the name of the street?
It was the former New Horizon site.
Okay.
And the two lots next to it. So it's the New Horizon site, and then it goes two lots to the east.
What's the...
Sorry, to the west.
Name of the street again? I forget.
So you're talking about just those three lots?
Yeah, because there's residential on that street, and I don't see why...
I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's one issue. Then turning to the, then turning to the banners, I think 60 days is enough. I didn't want to ask the Lexus dealer and the Acura dealer whether huge banners and balloons sell cars, but I really find it difficult to believe in especially upper-end products like Lexus, Acura, BMW, Mercedes. And I really find it hard to believe that people are going to be attracted by balloons and banners and just pull over and decide to buy or lease a luxury car. So I think 60 days is more than enough for the banners. In terms of the trees, you don't have to put, you know, sort of green type of leafy trees. I think you can use palms or other type of, of trees that I think work well. So I'd like to see a little more greening in some of the lots. In terms of the preferential... In terms of the preferential parking for the residents, I agree with the general concepts. I think they've done a great job. Jono did a great job and his staff of organizing these districts and so forth. And I agree with most of what they said. But I don't think increasing $6 fees to 25 or 30 a month. These are low-income neighborhoods, period. They are mostly rental units down there. There are a few condominiums, not many. And then, of course, there's some single-family homes, but they're very modest in nature. And I don't think going to 25 or 30 a month for the residents is the appropriate.
A year.
I mean, a year is the appropriate step, especially if, in fact, you're getting more than one permit, you're going with, you have children and so forth. Then in terms of the non-residential, I do like that concept. I think it's going to help balance the situation. But I think that the $12 a month, I don't think is enough. I think that should be, you're basically talking about $120 a year. There are very few places where you can pay $120 a year to park. True, it's on the street, it's not a, it's not a parking structure, but still, I think we can move that up a bit. And then, of course, the idea here is, and I once again agree with Jono, and the idea is that they're going to take surveys of individual streets, they know these neighborhoods quite well, they certainly spent enough time doing all of these studies, and then they can adjust them on an annual basis. So I think that's a very good idea. In terms of the three-foot buffer, I agree, that's, that's fine. I think the more cars the dealers have, and the more showrooms that they have, and the more opportunities for the public to view different cars, the better off they'll be. And obviously, so will the employees of these companies, as well as the tax that we take in. But this is a tremendous, I think after the Galleria, this has always been our number two in terms of sales tax. And it's not just the money that we get in terms of the tax, it's also the jobs that these companies provide. And they're not, they're very well-paid jobs, whether they're sort of blue-collar technical jobs that the mechanics do, to the people that process the paperwork, and do the financing, and the sales staff, and the maintenance people, and everyone else. So this is a tremendous industry. And I'm very glad that we have the kind of participation from the dealers that we've had throughout the years. So we have to do everything we can to try to help them increase their sales.
Mr. Njerian?
Well, where should I start with all these issues? With regard to the zoning on the New Horizon property, I, I mean, I don't have a problem. I would, I would permit that to go to the CA. It's a proposed CA zone, is that correct? That's a CA. And that property, even though there's other residential in there, it was basically going to be, I don't know what kind of use that was initially intended to be with New Horizons, a childcare center, or of a active use. I don't have a problem, you know, expanding the CA zone to there. As far as the signs go, I don't have a problem with the signs. I support the proposed modifications, revising those standards. The three feet versus five feet setback, I don't think two feet are going to make much difference in terms of the buffer, in terms of the landscape. So I would, I would support the three-foot there.
What are the trees inside?
The trees, I mean, I see where they're coming from. I think we could probably pick a type of tree that is going to permit the vehicles to be seen, that's not going to have as much impact on the placement of the cars. And Mr. Quintero mentioned palm. Maybe there's another couple types of trees that would suit both greening the area, but at the same time keeping the stock visible to members of the public. The preferential parking, I, I support the recommendations. I think the cost of $24, $25 is not onerous. We're talking about a yearly cost. And, believe me, the value of having a spot available in the neighborhood is going to be much, really a good value, well worth it. And the idea is that these fees are going to be reflective of the actual cost of the program. So is this going to include the parking enforcement fees that are in there? So I don't want to set it too low, and then have it turn out that we're not having enough funding to go through and do the citations and all that. I think it should be a self-supporting system. I don't think we should burden the general fund with any other sort of expenses that we could, that we could place that only reflect the true cost of the program. The guest permits, I'm okay with the proposed, the structure on that. I would like to see some sort of program to encourage the property owners not to be renting out their spaces, garage spaces or subterranean spaces, to non-residents. Think they're, maybe see that as a revenue source that we as council do not intend when we set parking, parking requirements for those areas. The benefit would be that perhaps there would be additional onsite, or off-site parking at those locations for the residents, which would perhaps make it even better, that those folks with their classic cars and all that other stuff go somewhere else, perhaps, to perhaps a more industrial area of town, and strike deals with landowners there for the placement of those, those vehicles. What else is, there are a lot of issues here that we, staff, did I sort of give you, did I leave anything out that you wanted to hear about?
Did you say time on the temporary signs? I know you were okay, but they're 60 or 90 days?
Oh, I think 60 days is good. And that's to be dispersed throughout the entire year, not necessarily used in one block. So I think a 60-day would work. I don't think, I don't know what sells cars exactly. I mean, someone referenced the internet. Clearly, an internet banner or an internet sign does drive people to a location where they, where they can buy a, the item. So I don't think the internet analogy is very good at all. But I think, I think let's go with the 60 days. If there's a sudden drop-off of sales on the Brand Boulevard of cars, I think council would be happy to listen to any suggestions to modify the 60 days.
Mr. Foy?
Excuse me, and one other request we had from the public. There was another property owner on Elk Avenue, East of Brand, who objected to their property being rezoned to CA as well.
That was the one that's the parking lot now?
Cars 911, Wolf said.
Cars 911.
Now, are we spot zoning when we do things like that? Are we getting into spot zoning issues where we look at one particular property and make exceptions for that?
Mayor Friedman, Council Njerian, actually, the, whoops. Actually, that would be consistent with the property to the east. Just have it.
It's your, it's your.
Am I advancing?
Yeah, you are. It's the middle red button.
Yeah, okay.
That's the laser.
Trying to hit the red button.
Don't point it at us.
This is also multifamily, so this wouldn't change the underlying zone. The only spot part of it would be the parking overlay zone, if you wanted to go with that, because there's already an overlay zone. So we have, parking overlay zones are designed to be adjacent to commercial zones and residential zones. So if you wanted to, Planning Commission had some testimony from the property owner, and they said make it CA. But again, if you want to take these two lots and here, and make it whatever the underlying zone is.
This is the back of the Geishmit?
Yeah, it's the two east, it's the two easterly lots. They're already used as parking, surface parking lot.
But they're zoned as multifamily, aren't they?
Zoned as multifamily.
Currently.
Right, with one of these exotic parking overlay zones in the South Brand Plan, which will go away. The multifamily zone won't go away, but if you want the nearest thing to what we have, it'd just be a conventional parking overlay zone. It won't give the car dealers or anybody else the kind of flexibility that the CA zone has. However, if the property owner wants to have the flexibility of continuing to have multifamily there someday in the future, then that would be a decision you could make now. Planning Commission thought about it and said, yeah, we like the CA better than leaving it at multifamily.
You said, I'm sorry, they can still build multifamily with the CA zone? Is that?
No, no, that's the problem.
So we're basically changing the zoning from what it is today to CA?
Right.
And they wish to keep it at multifamily?
Right. They wish to have the flexibility to build residential units. We certainly don't want to allow residential dwellings in the CA zone. So the alternative is leave the underlying zone the way it is, which is either 2250 or 1650, I forget which. 16, or 1650. So again, if you have a.
So my thoughts on that would be, I would prefer not to encourage further multifamily use in that location, because that's really where we're having the problems here with parking and the interface. And I prefer that that then revert to the CA zone.
CA zone.
I mean, that would be my preference.
Wolf, I have a question. How about the other property that we were talking about?
Other one?
That runs from Glendale.
Okay.
What street is that again? No one's given.
Maryland.
Maryland.
It's kind of cut, it's kind of cut off here. Glendale Avenue is over here. So it's this, it's more than just the one site, it's this southerly half of the block. But it's currently multifamily? It's currently multifamily with another exotic overlay zone that allows car dealers to do things that they won't necessarily be able to do if we make it a, just a conventional parking overlay zone. And now, to the north of that property? This is multifamily, R2250 with a conventional parking overlay zone. It's, I think, the, one of the studios, and they use it for parking. And then, how about that same, not that property, but the other property on Glendale Avenue, it's commercial? That's going to be, go from CG to C3, so that really won't change anything as far as that project or much of anything else is concerned. What can you do in C3? A multitude of retail, almost any retail office, auto repair.
Wouldn't you say, though, that it's?
Presidential, but residential to the R1250 standards. So it's like building in a, in a multifamily zone.
Wouldn't you say it's multifamily, though? You mean it's zone multifamily, but how much of it is actually multifamily, and how much of it is other uses?
Used?
Yeah.
I think there's some old houses still, still in that pocket. There's two or three old houses left. Still people living there.
Right, but generally, I'm just curious, how much of it is commercial, and how much of it really is multifamily?
Well, none of, none of this is currently used commercial. This northern part is all basically parking. So this, there's, there's still residential there, other than what's been torn down. There hasn't been any creep of any parking, unlike the other one, which is already used for parking. This doesn't have any parking, commercial parking on it right now. It's either an old house or two, or, or it's been demolished. So again.
So basically, you're rezoning that to CA?
That was the proposal from staff. Planning Commission agreed with that. That gives them, it's consistent with what we're trying to do.
What about the property owners there? Do they agree with it?
We've only heard from the one property owner that was going to do the, on the old New Horizon site, that wanted to continue to have residential development. We haven't heard from anybody else. So on the Elk property, we've heard. Specifically, what they want to do is affordable housing for veterans, is what they're talking about.
Right. So with this zoning, they can't do it?
No. So again, the choice is leave it the way it is.
Just one point of clarification, and if I, if I got it wrong, Jillian will clarify for me. The addition that we added on 29 would allow somebody to submit an application now, and then put residential housing there. At least the first two speaker, council that spoke, said, no, it's okay to go to CA. But the addition that we have in that section 29, if there is an application, they would be able to go under the old rules.
There's an application for?
If there's an application that's been deemed complete for development or tentative track map, before this ordinance takes effect, the current zoning would apply unless they made a written request to have the new zoning apply, so.
And just so it's clear, the applicant for that particular parcel has indicated they will try to get an application before the effective date of this ordinance, if the ordinance is past as is.
Other comments? Mr. Manekian?
Well, in terms of the properties we were just talking about, I would like to see them remain as they are. Because I hate to do any kind of zoning against the wishes of the current property owners and, and take away any of the rights that they currently have. In terms of all the, all the zoning issues, other than those two, I'm okay pretty much with everything, including keeping the, the site that Mr. Quintero mentioned, keeping it multifamily, was it, Frank? Trees, I, I equate having trees in, in the inventory area of, of the car dealers to having trees in, in either Ralph's or Vaughn's, every other aisle having a tree there so that it looks better. I just think, you know, when you're thinking about inventory, that's what I think about. If you apply to different or across industries, I would not want to have trees on my inventory if I had an inventory of cars. I would prefer not to have trees, and I, and I would support that. However, if there's no support on the council for that, I don't mind clustering the trees in, in one area so that the majority of the inventory is not tarnished, or, or the paint is not damaged because of either trees falling, or limbs falling, as we saw the past week with, with all the winds, even with little winds, trees and limbs fall, and tree limbs fall. So I'm in favor of doing away with the trees and either clustering them or not having them in the inventory areas, not in the parking, not in the parking areas of the employees, but, but, but the inventory areas and, but I'm in favor of having trees in the showrooms. Is that possible? No? Banners and balloons. I would like to ask, I know there are representatives, do banners and balloons sell cars? And can you answer it? Can somebody answer it?
I think they do. I mean.
Okay, come on up, yeah. Because, you know, I don't sell cars, and I don't know what sells cars. You're in the business.
If you can state your name for the record?
Yes, it's Pete Marabian. And I think they do. And I think the gentleman that said that the internet is an example of where balloons don't imply, I think Frank Quintero was correct in saying that, yes, there's, I believe it was him, that banners do, or maybe it was R. Njerian, that banners do sell stuff online. So if you have a balloon sale online, you'll have it. Now, what it is, is when you have a lot of small balloons on your lot, it attracts attention. People think that there's a sale going on, they're more apt to buy a car. And we want to remember that we want to have that, that energy, that, that balloon energy say, come on, now's the time to buy a car. Look, things are happening over here. So I, I do think it helps out.
And banners?
Absolutely. I mean, if you have a, like, let's say 0% long-term financing, I think that's, that's, you have all that traffic going through, through Brand Boulevard, you want to have that display area saying, hey, we have 0% financing, stop by, create action, you know, come by and buy a car.
Okay, and 90 days would be better than 60 days, I would think.
90 days would be better than 60 days, obviously. I, I think limiting the dealers, the more you limit the dealers, the less revenue we can, we can generate for the city, the less you're limiting sales and things like that.
Thank you very much. That testimony is, is important to me. So, you know, I don't have a problem with banners and balloons. I, you know, I, I will accept what was said in terms of, they do attract attention. And I know that any kind of sales, when you're doing any kind of sales, you want to get the people to walk in your door and not let them out until they buy something. So if it's going to, if banners and balloons are going to attract. attract attention to your, to your facility, and I think the smaller dealership will benefit from that more than larger dealerships, because, you know, Lexus, Acura, BMW, and the other very prominent car dealers don't really need the balloons, but the smaller ones, maybe a used car lot might need a balloon or, or some banners, that would help them as well. I'm in favor of all of that, because car dealerships, as already was said, is one of the main economic engines for, for the city. A lot of people work in those areas, and it generates a lot of revenue for the city as well. What I'm not in favor of is having businesses park in residential areas. I do understand that it's a necessity, and I, I do face a dilemma when I say that as, as well, because the reason why I ask whether you had sufficient parking for your employees, as these newer dealerships are being built, I expect them to have enough sufficient parking for their employees. But those dealerships that are not new, and they don't have the wherewithal or the funding to build, or they're not planning on building new dealerships, they will have, they might not have enough room for their inventory as well as their employees. So that is a dilemma. I'm willing to consider part, partial parking in certain areas, and although I think of the staff very highly, especially transportation staff, but I can just see the issues that will come up as certain areas want more residential, or less residential, or more or less business parking. I haven't given it enough thought to determine what would be a proper approach to the parking and the percentages in terms of the businesses and residential. In principle, I'm opposed to it. However, I'm willing, I, I want to keep an open mind, and I'm willing to come up with some sort of a compromise or something that, that allows businesses that don't have the facilities to self-park, to allow them to have some, some reasonable areas within residential, within reasonable times to park in those areas. And I think 6 o'clock is too late. I believe that generally, people are home between, after 5:00, and I would consider during the day, maybe having 10 to 20% of the permits go to businesses, but not after 5:00. It has to be before 5:00. I'm in favor of the three-foot buffer. Again, we have to support our dealerships to allow them enough inventory to do the sales, because the bigger inventory they have, the more sales they do, the more money the city makes, the more funds are available for services to the community. And in terms of the fees for the shared parking, 120 is low. I don't know how much you pay for Americana for each car. Can you state that here today? Who was that? Can you pass me a note?
Yes, I'll tell you later.
Okay.
The fees aren't on the schedule.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not $120 a year. I don't think we should be at 100, at what they, they charge at the Americana. But I think, what is the Orange Street Garage parking rate? Does anyone know? $30? $30 a month? I think it should be around there. That's reasonable. Maybe 20, I think, instead of, instead of $10 or $12. 20, 25 would be reasonable. But I say lower because you don't have specific parking areas and specific areas that you can park. So in general, that's, that's that. Did I miss anything? Temporary, yeah, temporary banners, 90 days, I'm in favor of 90 days.
Mr. Weaver?
I don't know why you have to limit it, actually.
Buffer, landscape buffer, five, 3 to 5 feet?
3 feet.
Okay. Glendale is now over 100 years old, and Glendale is evolving. The car dealerships on Brand were, some were there back in the 1920s. 100 years, 80, 100 years later, it's a totally different environment. South Brand is not going to stay static another 50, 80 years. It's going to evolve again. Lot will depend on how cars are sold and what mechanism they're sold in. So it's not a static environment. It's going to change. When I drive down past Colorado on Brand, I believe I'm ending a sterile environment. I'm not looking for residential zone with trees and shrubbery and everything all around. It's sterile. It's car dealerships selling cars. They don't put trees around. So as far as changing the buffer from 3 to 5 and clustering trees, no, no change. Happen to believe that, just to name two, Lexus and BMW have come in new structures. They were able to fund new structures. They're not going to be the last. When new ones come in, working with design staff, if it makes sense to put landscaping in or to put trees in, let them work that out, let the car dealership work that out with staff. But trying to mandate it, no, I wouldn't do that. I believe all the area around Memorial Hospital will become medical center buildings. Same thing as we've talked about on North Brand, up around Verdugo Hills Hospital. Same thing that has happened around Adventist Hospital and Huntington Memorial. And Providence, come on, the one in Burbank. Yeah, St. Charles, where my kids were born. Medical buildings all over the place. That's going to happen down around Memorial, too. They'll push right up against the car dealerships. So no residential should be sitting down there bordering on Los Feliz, except the triangle piece to the right, which we've approved, and where probably many of the physicians or nurses or whatever will live and be able to walk to work. Let's see. I know from experience talking to car dealers over the past, when people come in, if you can't show them the car they want on the lot at that time, you have a good chance of losing them. You want to keep them on the lot. And if you have to put them into storage, they're shot. Shopping patterns have changed. You want to walk in and see it and buy. So if it comes, push comes a shove, and you want to have a car there, there's somebody you buy, or you're going to have your, your worker there, gee, I can, I can guess what's going to happen. I know if I go up in the 5th, 6th floor of the Americana, one car dealership has that whole thing covered with new cars. Storage away, but they can get them down to the dealership within 5, 10 minutes while the dealer is stalling for time to bring the car in. New car dealerships, yes, as Mr. Manokian said. We've required adequate parking for the workers on. The new ones, when they come on, the same requirements will hit. Over time, all the car dealerships that'll be built into the future will have adequate parking on site. Advertisement? I see Brand Boulevard car advertisements on television all the time. You do more advertising for Glendale, I think, than any, the rest of Glendale added together, unless you want to throw in the Americana. That gets people to Brand, because I remember some years ago, when the car dealers wanted to put a nice sign next to the 134 freeway, so people coming up the 134 could see it. Because Brand is inside the city. It's not bordering on a freeway like many of the car malls are. So wanted a sign, and what happened? The people that live up on the hill that need a microscope or telescope to be able to see the sign objected and killed the idea. Very bad logic, as far as I can tell.
I voted in favor of that sign.
We can bring that back sometime.
Okay, bring it back. Just takes two of us to want to put it on? Want to put it on?
Yes.
Okay, there's two. We'll put the sign pack on. That'll help advertisement. Now, whether balloons or banners do anything, I don't know. They're not going to help get people onto Brand Boulevard. Your advertisers are already doing that. You'd have to put them so high to see from the freeway, I don't know the value in it. And once they get to Brand, if you've got some low-flying banners or something, I guess it helps. I'm an engineer. I'm not a marketer, so I, I really can't tell you what works. If you need 90 days, that's fine with me. You said, that's a sterile environment, that's a selling environment. What works is, down there is what we should try to give you, considering the residential component that's in there. Need 90 days, that's fine, too. I'm not going to count it in fees, because we don't have the information to do that today. That's why I asked. Do we have the information on fees? Is that here today? And it is, so I won't mention that. So what did I not cover that you want? So Lazada, anything? The what?
The residential zone.
The one up there where zone multifamily in the middle of a auto area and bordering on Colorado? No, no residential. That whole area, going to the east from there is not going to be residential, in my view. Colorado's a main thoroughfare in this city. It's not really set, unless you've got a high-rise or something. We've approved one already across from the Americana. What else? The one down Memorial? I just said that's going to be, end up being all medical, in my view. It's just a natural, because you've seen it at every other hospital, to allow a residential put in there. I mean, if they can get it in in time and it passes, fine, but, but what you see in other areas is the medical complex that are coming in. Health field is a pretty big field. Yeah, that's the one. It's right across from Memorial, isn't it? Oh, no? Oh, on the one on Elk? Uh, that, isn't that the one I said, no?
Mr. Weaver, you did. You said the one on Elk. You preferred that, that go to CA. The other one we're talking about is New Horizons site on Maryland, that will go from Maryland all the way through to Glendale.
Oh, on Maryland. Oh, shoot. What's the cross street? Elk? That's down lower.
Cross Street is Cypress.
I don't think it'll be residential.
Any other comments, Mr. Weaver?
Did I cover everything? Yeah, yeah. What, what you suggested, go ahead. Is it going to work? Is it going to be perfect? Absolutely no. You're going to survey it, you're going to be back here before the next council, the next of the year, saying we need to fine-tune it, do some adjustments. And you'll do it the year after that, and the year after that. As the residential area changes, some apartments may go down, it'll turn into mini parks, or might turn into something else supporting the auto industry or whatever. But you're going to look at it every year. What you got, you've done all the homework, way more than anybody could expect, and you've heard the praise for what you've done. So, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Quintero?
I just want to make a couple of comments. It took a high-powered executive manager, Mr. Morabian, to point out the, the banner issue. That, he happened to make a good point. I mean, I think someone driving by and seeing a banner in front of, in this case Hyundai or whoever it is, with zero financing, they might be persuaded. So maybe that, that was a good point. He didn't mention balloons, though, so I'm not sure. And the thing is, I told Mr. Najarian after I came back from the LA Auto Show, oh my God, Hyundai and Kia are just unbelievable in terms of their, their fit and finish on all their new vehicles. But at any rate, I guess I feel a little more comfortable with the banners. In terms of the trees, I should have mentioned it. I'm okay with this cluster concept. I think it would kind of look nice in a lot if you had some sort of, you know, greening. It doesn't have to be individually spread out throughout the, the parking lot.
Oh, may I add one thing, Madam Mayor? I hope we don't have to sit up here and debate the diameter of blues.
About your what?
18 inches.
That's a joke.
No, we don't have to debate it.
Five balloons, oh, well, 6-foot diameter.
Someone else has already made that decision for us.
$12 a month is not $120 a year. Who came up with that number?
Okay, so I'll make my comments. First of all, I think that the important thing... What's that noise? Oh, okay. Somebody's pounding on the ceiling. It's okay. I think the important thing to remember here is that we are, and there's a lot of issues that are in this package that weren't discussed here. I mean, really, what we've discussed are the ones that are, where there's some debate and some discussion. But there's a, a whole bigger package that is really intended to cut red tape for businesses and to increase flexibility for property owners, to give certainty for people who are applying, and to keep these auto dealers from having to spend a lot of time going in front of boards and commissions and, and planning, to do things that are pretty routine in nature for their business. And I think that that is what the city should be doing in general. It should be streamlining its processes. It should be making things easier for business, while of course, at the same time, protecting the quality of life that the citizens expect. And I think that staff has done a really great job here at balancing those issues. I do think that this is going to be a huge benefit for the businesses in South Brand and for the property owners. And that's my hope, and that's the intention of this zoning package. So I'm glad that they're here and that they're generally in support of this. I think probably very much so in support of this. And it's my pledge that, you know, we will keep doing this all around the city when we see the need. So I'm glad that we can do this here. So let me talk about the zoning first and then the parking. In terms of the zoning, you know, one thing that Mr. Weaver said I don't agree with, even though I think in general I agree with a lot of what he said, which was that we expect the Brand Avenue of Cars to be a sterile environment. I think that it still needs to be a welcoming environment, and an environment that's soft and green, because people drive up and down it. It's a huge part of Glendale. It's an entry into our downtown for a lot of people. And it, you know, a lot of the regulations that we've had an effect and that are continuing to be in effect are to keep it from being an area where there are no trees, where there is no landscaping, where the advertising is so out of control that it's cheesy, or tacky, or distracting. And I know that that's also not the intention of the merchants in the Brand Avenue of Cars. But I have seen other cities with car areas where there are the clowns out front, and there's the balloons that go 200 feet into the sky, and there's, you know, and, you know, it really just looks like a place that's not Glendale. So whatever regulations we have are to prevent that from happening. That said, I do sympathize with the trees in the inventory parking lot concept. To me, besides the greening effect, one of the reasons that we have trees in parking lots in general is for the benefit of the people who are parking there. So that when you go into a parking lot in the summer and you come back out of the, out of your store, you can touch your car without burning your hand off. And, you know, it's pleasant, and it's a softer-looking environment, and some of the carbon dioxide's been dealt with because there's living green plants. I don't think you have quite as much need for that in a parking lot that's being used for inventory. If you were, if it was their parking lots that they were used for customer parking, I would say they should have the same regulations that every other parking lot in the city has. And I do support the regulations we have for parking lots in the city, because I, as a customer myself, I really see the difference between going to, say, the new Trader Joe's that's on Glen Oaks in Burbank, that has a lot of nice trees, and going to the mall here with the Nordstrom's Rack, which, you know, I love Nordstrom's Rack, but I hate that parking lot, because there's not a spot of shade in it. But, you know, for them, for their inventory, I think it's a different thing. So I would like to find a way that we still have green landscape there without giving them the burden of having to deal with, you know, a different need, which is the inventory of the cars. And to me, I think maybe that compromise is to maybe increase the requirement for trees in that landscape buffer. And I'm okay with 3 feet, because you can plant trees, and they can plant trees that aren't messy, and they can plant trees that don't have giant huge canopies that are going to be an issue. But I'd like to see that maybe, I mean, my suggestion would be that I'm giving to my colleagues, that maybe we, besides the cluster idea, which we could give as an option, that we could also allow them to plant some extra trees in that landscape that goes around the parking lot, within that 3 feet, to make up for that. And, yeah, people aren't going to maybe see your cars as much from, in front of... And, yeah, people aren't going to maybe see your cars as much from in front of the parking lot, but they're going to know they're there and they can certainly walk through it. So that would be my suggestion for a compromise because I don't think that the people of Glendale want to see an entire area that has no trees. But I also don't want them to have to reduce space within their inventory lots and deal with, you know, whatever issues that could come up from trees within their inventory The signs, I'm fine with the city proposal, the 1.5 and the extra signs. I am okay with the 60-day for the banners, the temporary banners. I'm sure that they do attract people, you know, whether or not it makes people buy, I don't know, but I'm a little nervous about, you know, like I said, I want them to have their displays and I want it to be easier. And, you know, allowing the sign polls, the signage on the poles and all of that's going to give them a lot more flexibility, but I am a little nervous about some of the dealerships crossing that line into where we're going to start getting complaints from residents. And I do get complaints about things related to displays. I've been getting complaints about Christmas tree lots and some of their displays. So we will get, we will get those complaints and, you know, I don't want to have to revisit this. So to the parking situation, first of all, as my colleagues have said, this is really management. This is not a solution. All we can do, given that we have more people who want to park on the streets than we have room, is to try to do our best to be fair and manage. My inclination in terms of the cost for the residents would be to try to keep that as low as possible for the permits. And I agree, by the way, with the limit of the three permits as opposed to unlimited permits. You know, that is crazy. To keep it as low as possible for the residents, but I would be okay with increasing the cost for the non-residents because I think they're still getting a bargain to be able to have their employees park off their site. I'm also okay with allowing the 25%, I think it was, the city suggestion for the off-site parking, the non-resident parking, or maybe it was more. That's okay with me if the cost was higher. I'd like to, in other words, I'd like to see the non-resident businesses kind of pick up that cost so that the residents don't have to pay more. That would be my suggestion. But I'm okay with allowing them to have those off-site parking, as much of that off-site parking as they need. I see Mr. Engels here, so I wanted to ask him about this rumor we hear about apartment owners not allowing their residents to park in their parking spaces and whether we've done any enforcement on that, whether, in his view, that's true. Because if that's true, then some of this need could be being created by those apartment owners, and that could help a lot with reducing that demand on the street.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council, Sam Engel, Neighborhood Services Administrator. This issue's come up periodically over the time that I've been here. In fact, the council actually amended the zoning code several years ago to address this specific issue, to require that parking that was built for purposes of residential development actually be used in that residential development, which was the crux of your discussion a couple minutes ago. Over the course of the year, we do enforcement by complaint only. We're not out aggressively looking for this violation, but when it does come in, we will go out and investigate that. Over the course of the year, citywide, we'll respond anywhere between five probably and 10 complaints a year. Our enforcement takes a couple of turns. One, it's illegal specifically under the zoning code, but the way that we actually compel the enforcement is a little bit differently because selling the parking then becomes a commercial activity in a residential zone, and that's actually our strategy to eliminate it. It's actually a little bit more effective than trying to deal with it as a, as a parking use violation. So typically, the threat of enforcement, much like everything else, our residents, our apartment owners and our business owners know that, much as your discussion, that our community has a high standard for quality of life, and they know that when you direct us and we respond to you, that we're serious about those kind of things. And the threat of the consequence of not complying actually results in compliance when we get those.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. So my suggestion would be that when we notice the residents about these changes in the parking, the permit rules, that we also notice them about their rights to have a space within their building and give them the information of contacting Neighborhood Services if they're being denied access to their parking facilities. So that would be, and that perhaps it's something that we include routinely when people apply for parking permits, that we can also give them an informational sheet, you know, translated into different languages, explaining what they're allowed to have, you know, on, on their own site. Okay? Any other?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I am also in favor of $6 preferential parking for the residents because I do agree that a number of residents are low income and they might not be able to afford higher parking rates. In addition, I also am in favor of preserving the current preferential parking that is there on Windsor. And there are, there is one adjacent street that has applied to have preferential parking as well, and they've been waiting for months, if not years, for that to be implemented. I'm in favor of allowing them to have their preferential parking based, based on when they applied it, not with the current stuff, but when they applied it. The reason, and I brought this up in the beginning of my term in May, I believe, the reason why they've been, they've not been giving the preferential parking is because they've been waiting for us to act on this issue. So I think they should certainly receive it because they have collected over 75% of the residents on that street, they have collected the signatures from them, so.
Okay, so I hear consensus for the items that weren't really discussed, like the change in the threshold for allowing the permit parking, you know, all of that.
I'll be happy to move to one, but I make sure in none of these motions are we discussing fee structure, right?
Let me just ask Mr. Lazafame if you, because we had some different differences of opinion up here, slight differences of opinion. If you've heard enough consensus for staff, for staff's direction or if you want any, us to sort of come to a more of a consensus on any issues.
I'm going to, actually, I'm going to ask you to, to give us a little bit of feedback on the residential, whether it should go to the C.A. or not. And while you're answering, and the team can put their heads together and see, we were all taking notes on the different items.
So it's two property owners.
It's two properties.
And I understand it's a few different lots, but it's two property. I'm fine with going with the request of those individual property owners, and just for those two.
Going with the request of the property owners.
To maintain their multifamily zoning.
Who owns that New Horizon lot, anyway? That's in bankruptcy court, isn't it?
Yeah, I thought.
I mean, I mean, it's great to say let the owners decide, but as far as we're concerned, the city has as much an interest in that because our loan is on that property.
Mr. Garcia, who owns that lot? Actually, it's three, is it, well, it's just the one lot, then there's two additional lots that they're in escrow on. So who owns the one lot that was the New Horizon site?
I believe that they still own, they still have title to it.
BK, isn't it?
They filed bankruptcy, but there hasn't been any foreclosure action by any of the parties that have a, have a deed of trust on it.
Trustee has, they can't sell it. Trustee has control over that property if they're in BK.
Correct, but, correct, but foreclosure, you can still go and seek permission from property, from the trustee, and even a voluntary sale you can if the trustee feels that the sale is in the best interest of the bankruptcy estate. On the issue of the two, of these two properties, the Elk and the Maryland, the resolution approving the general plan amendment will have to be revised to reflect that the designations for those is staying the same. That's, from what I can tell, there are three council members that support keeping that the same. So when, when that motion is made...
Excuse me, can we, can we have some quiet? I'm having trouble hearing, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, I apologize. So when that resolution is moved for approval, that'll, I'll request that that be as revised to keep the land use designations for those two properties the same, essentially. Because right now, it's proposed, it's proposed that they be changed.
Which one is that, then?
That is one.
Or four?
Yeah, resolution at one.
That includes the property up by the first one and New Horizons?
Correct.
Elk.
The one, that's a car dealer that...
The one that Mr. Kraus was talking about on Wolf, on Elk.
Elk. Next to...
Cadillac side.
Yeah, the old Cadillac, Oldsmobile dealer.
The easternmost, the easternmost.
Yeah, the eastern.
That is adjacent to multifamily anyways.
Correct.
I guess we need to clarify a few things. I'm glad Mr. Garcia brought that up. What we should maybe do is not have you vote on the resolution today, the land use element, maybe do that.
We can bring that back because we've got to bring the ordinance back.
Just so that we can write it correctly based on what, what the feeling is.
And give us a map of those two with the surrounding.
Yeah, we'll have to change, we'll be changing the map. So let me start with that because that's probably the easiest thing to resolve. Normally, well, not normally, always it takes at least four votes to change a zone. Now, this whole process involves many changes, so we want to make sure that this gets adopted so that there may or may not have to be some compromise here. There doesn't seem to be four votes to change it to C.A.
That's correct.
Now, normally, that would leave the existing zone in place, either the 2250 or the 1650 on those two sections. However, the two overlay zones that exist are going away with the South Bran plan, so we do have to make some decision. It can't be just a vacuum for those. So I know some people want it to be residential, some people would like it to be C.A. So Mayor Friedman, I don't know whether you want to establish some, some ground rules if, if the majority...
Can that be a separate vote from the rest of the package?
Because you're...
So that everything doesn't look...
You're repealing the...
You're repealing these, the, the plan, which includes everything that's in it.
But we can appeal, we can repeal the plan and then vote on what the zoning is for those individual lots, can't we?
But you'll need a four, that, I think, Mr. Garcia's...
Probably what you should do is you should introduce an ordinance addressing the, two separate, and I think you can do this, introduce an ordinance addressing everything but those two properties, introduce a separate order, address, ordinance addressing those. And it sounds like there's actually, Mr. Kraus is right, there's not really movement of four council members to change the zoning of those. So maybe what can be done is to introduce it, keeping those the same, and we can go for...
Including the overlay parking.
I'm sorry?
Including the overlay parking.
Right. It seemed to be if this were, if we were trying to be consistent with what we would normally do, it would defer to the status quo. So the status quo is R. 1650 and R. 2250, but to be more consistent with what it is, a conventional parking overlay zone, so I don't know whether, since the majority seems to be C.A., however, in this case, the minority probably would normally control in a zone change. So I don't know how the council feels about leaving those properties as R. 1650 parking overlay, R. 2250 parking overlay. That would make life simple, I think.
But that's what it is now, right?
Well, regardless, I think we should carve them out of the zone change so that we don't have that issue.
The problem with that is that if you can't get four votes on the next ordinance, you have nothing.
And you won't have change. But it's, it's up to the council. I understand.
If we take those two, if we take those properties out of the zone change, then they don't have, you don't have the issue of anyone objecting to that, not voting on the rest, and then there'd be no change for those properties.
No, but there has to be a change because of the overlay zones. The overlay zones are, are going away.
Can we take that as a separate issue?
Could you bring those two back?
Not really.
You can't.
Can't. No.
I'm sorry, why?
Well, because those zones won't exist.
Which ones?
The overlay, the overlay zones, because these aren't the conventional parking overlay zones.
Those need to come back as a residential, as, are you saying there's no zoning that would then...
Yeah, it seemed to be the fair thing would be to do is leave them as the resident, multifamily residential and make them parking overlay. So even though the three people on council seem to want the opposite, under normal, more limited circumstances, it would seem to be fair to do the opposite.
Was I one of the two?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll switch over. That take care of the problem?
Yes, that probably takes care of the problem.
Councilman Weaver, you would go with residential?
Yeah, with what you just said.
With what? The R. 1650, R. 2250, both with a parking overlay.
Right.
That'll take care of this dilemma. I'll do it.
Yeah, that would take, that would definitely take care of that.
Taskifies the two property owners, doesn't kill the city.
Okay, now, wait a minute. Here's, here's my problem that I feel uncomfortable. We're talking about specific properties at this point rather than entire zoning areas. I want to know who the owners of those properties are. We may have some issues with our campaign finance.
Oh, that too.
So I, I'd like to know who they are so later not turn out that we carved out a sweetheart deal for someone who's giving me big money.
Okay, well, Councilman...
Or will give me big money.
We can introduce ordinance as has been suggested by Mr. Kraus and then bring that information back to you at the time. I would tell you that the way this particular ordinance is, it wouldn't apply to the campaign finance ordinance, but we can definitely bring the information back to you so each council member can make their own decision on whether to participate in the decision.
And actually, that would be less of a change than going to C.A. It's giving them a few lesser rights, actually, than they have now.
Keeping them where they are now, right.
Hey, now can I move to one without a problem?
But if we do that, Mr. Garcia said we'll have to do, we'd like to redo the resolution for the land use element map change to make sure we get it right.
Right, I think what Mr. Kraus is...
Because we have to redo the maps.
Hold one over.
Hold two, number one over and then introduce the ordinances.
Not to, you know, belabor this, but I'm a little confused about what you heard for consensus with the landscaping issue.
Yeah, I wanted to go into some of that, too, but I want to resolve, it seems like we've resolved the zoning map issues, then. That would, that would make life a lot simpler.
Good. Anything to make life simpler.
Okay. So then in two weeks, assuming the other stuff is introduced, we'll come back with the revised land use element map resolution with a new, new maps. And, and the, if the zone change ordinance is introduced, we'll come back with revised maps for that, showing those two sections with the revised zoning that we just talked about. That leaves the zoning text amendment and some of the things we've heard. Again, it takes four votes to change the code, but we are changing it, and most of this can't stay the way it is. So we've got the same potential three-to-two versus four-to-one dilemma. Which item? Well, the 60 versus 90 days. We don't have four people saying either one.
Okay, I'll go to 60 days. Will that take care of it?
Do we have four, do we have four people for 60?
Good.
Okay.
I'm doing great here. I solved two problems.
It seems to be the three-foot landscaping was, I think we had four votes for that.
I think I'll find out.
We'll get to the trees last.
What about the balloons?
The balloon, it seemed like everybody was happy with the balloons. Everybody was hap, wow.
At the diameter...
I'm not happy with balloons.
I'm not either, but that's, that's just me.
Yes, Mr. Najarian. I can address it.
The thing about Brand Boulevard of Cars, it sets it apart from many other areas. Let's talk about either the one in Van Nuys or any of the other large schlocky sort of car rows, is that we have taken such effort to bring in quality business people who have invested tens of millions of dollars in their structures. Look at the Lexus, look at the BMW, look at the Mercedes, look at the Volkswagen, the list goes on and on. I think putting up balloons and little flyers really detracts from what we're trying to do as a city to make it a high-quality, attractive retail area where we can be proud. I drive down Brand Boulevard and I'm in awe when I see those, even the older Star Ford with the iconic columns and the, the Art Deco type of design. I think we really do ourselves a disservice by permitting balloons, flags, all that stuff. That can be, you can take that to Van Nuys Boulevard or Sunland or any of those other areas, but this is Glendale and we should continue what we're doing in the northern part of Bran, mid-Bran, through the Americana, on south, down through the Brand Boulevard of Cars. That's just my opinion about it. And we sort of, you know, we laugh about it all, put these, it gives up more sale. I think we do ourselves a disservice and the dealers a disservice because the next dealership that needs to do an upgrade is going to look at those, those extremely attractive and well-designed buildings and say, well, that's what I want to be like. And that's just my opinion to it, so.
Maybe they would give up on the banners and balloons to get a sign over near the 134 freeway.
A microphone.
Your microphone, please.
I agree on the balloon issue. I mean, banners are one thing. You made a good point about a specific sale that you're doing or a specific financing plan, but balloons are what?
Can you clarify what the change is that's proposed for the balloons? Because I know they have some balloons now.
Yeah, none of them are legal.
I didn't realize that. We've got a bunch of lawbreakers over there.
They don't have a sign program approved for them. So right now, to get the 18-inch-high balloons, unlimited number, you have to, just like banners, you have to apply for a sign program. And a sign program, you need, there's a filing fee, there's exhibits, you have to have some coordination between all your signs and it's only good for two years.
Well, we need four votes, so it sounds like we have two who are not in favor of balloons. And let me just make a little comment, you know, about the dealerships doing things that they know aren't permitted. We're doing a lot here to try to benefit the dealerships. I mean, these changes that are being made are to benefit you all and I hope that you have enough respect to not violate our codes knowingly. I find that, you know, kind of shocking that you are all sort of smiling and nodding that you know that you have illegal installations when the staff has spent, you know, all this time really trying to find ways of, you know, helping you. So, you know, I really wouldn't see, think kindly on the Brand Avenue of Cars if I felt that that was continuing after this.
So we've had a little shift with the balloons. I thought, I mean, you don't have to convince me, I'm not a proponent of balloons.
I'm in favor of balloons, so I don't know.
This will need four votes.
It's a sales issue for me.
Already had four, right?
We had, I thought, five, but we're down to three, I think, for the balloons.
Well, I mean, I don't think that the dealers would want to jeopardize this entire package for balloons. So since you have lost two votes for balloons, I think the balloons need to be out if you want to pass this.
Balloons out, okay.
I will vote against the entire package.
Please.
I will go to war for balloons.
You did that on the project.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I think, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, then we just have the tree issue and the refinements to that.
Let me just clarify my comments. I mean, I would like to find a way to give the dealerships the flexibility to not have the trees in their inventory lots, but I also want to see them be well landscaped and to be green. And I think that staff maybe can work with them individually in ways of doing that, or not individually, have come up with something that will allow for some landscaping that includes trees, but that doesn't become onerous for them. Because I do understand that this is a little different from a public parking lot, this is an inventory lot. It's basically storage. So I'm okay with not having the trees anywhere within that storage, but I also want to be sure that each property has trees on it. So maybe between now and, I mean, unless anybody has any other thoughts, I think between now and then, if staff can come up with a suggestion of doing that, whether it's trees within that, giving them maybe an option of either putting more trees in their landscaping buffer or clustering it, but letting them have that flexibility as long as there's some certain, you know, minimum, that would be, that's what I'm looking for.
We've got an extra week to think about this if we come back in two weeks, so we'll try and get together and figure out how that works.
Two weeks we're not here.
Actually... It's going to have to be in January because I'm not here in two weeks.
Oh, yeah, I was going to ask that. So do we have a...
It'll have to be the first meeting in January, which would be January 10th, I believe.
January 10th, okay. All right, then that gives us even more time to work with that.
And maybe you can sit down with the dealers and, you know, between all of you, you can figure out a way of accomplishing that goal without...
Without losing all of the, without losing all of the trees.
Without losing all of our trees.
Because right now, the code is one for six parking spaces all over. That's the existing code.
And just to clarify my position, I'm okay with them not having that code within their inventory lots at all. But I just want to be sure that, I'm not saying make up all of those trees elsewhere on the lot, but just be sure that when we look at these lots, that they have the appearance of having landscaping and trees.
So the majority seems to be, it's okay to have fewer trees or no trees in the inventory as long as we maybe have them somewhere else.
Well, you need four of us to agree on anything, right?
Yeah.
The whole thing goes south. We better wait till they come back.
Right, that's why we're trying...
And that, you know, for a large lot, that could be a lot of trees. So I'm not suggesting that they make them up one-to-one, just that you have the appearance of greenery somewhere on those lots.
We'll try and come up with at least one option or two to see what works in terms of fitting the code in. I think that's it, then. I think we have enough direction.
Paint it on a wall. Paint it on a wall, beautiful tree landscape.
Can you paint balloons, too?
You can paint balloons, I think.
So then all we need is someone to introduce the zone change with the amendments?
Two and three.
I'll be glad to introduce two, two, and two, three, if I can.
Right, and then two, they'll be introduced, that's the zone map.
Zoning code, did we just do the map amendment first?
Yeah, the map, the zoning, I'm sorry, two is the map, which, I'm sorry, is the repeal.
Two's the repeal.
Well, yeah, the repeal includes the zoning, the repeal is in both of them.
And amendments Title V and Title 30.
Right.
So I introduce those two.
Is that...
We won't see that for a few weeks.
Well, four, two is to the text, right? Correct?
Right.
So that's what the change is, has been discussed this afternoon by Wolf. And then three is the zoning map change, leaving the zoning for Elk and the Maryland properties that we discussed as multifamily. So with those, they'll be introduced that way if Mr. Weaver consents.
Yeah.
Introduce them, okay?
Yeah.
So they're introduced. And then all staff needs is a motion on four, providing direction on the preferential parking policies and that item comes back.
So we're done?
Somebody has to make a motion on four.
On four? I'll move two, four.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Menucha.
Now, what is the motion? Okay, what is the direction for preferential parking that you have, Mr. Bagnan? Because this motion is saying motion providing direction to staff, so what is the direction I'd like to specify?
In specifics, I think there was a consensus among council members on the number of permits, limiting the number of permits to the residents in terms of unlimited versus limited number of permits. The simplification of the process, I felt that everybody was okay with it in terms of streamlining that. And then the cost of the permits to be brought back to council, there was a consensus among keeping the cost as low as possible. We will give you the...
For the residents.
For the residents.
They'll come back.
And we'll come back and give you what the actual cost is in terms of issuance of the permits and then we'll give you some figures on that. The cost of the non-residential permit to be higher than the $120 that was...
$44.
$240, $20 a month or $30 a month, depending on, again, we'll give you that option. And then there was consensus among council members on issuance of non-residential permits to the, in the preferential parking districts. That will be something that we will, we need to be careful not to take away on-street parking